Just for the audience's awareness, we've got some information that we're quickly reading through. Probably be another three or four minutes. Good morning. I'd like to call the Planning Commission to order and ask you all to rise and join me on the platform.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, the kindergarten, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could the roll be called, please?
Commissioner Leo Molitor.
Here.
Commissioner Nora Idukas.
Here.
Chair Bill Bartels.
Here.
Commissioner Richard Rodriguez.
Here.
Commissioner Mike Westner.
Present.
Come now to a time for public comments. This is a time set aside for comments by citizens on matters not appearing on the agenda. Have no speaker cards, moving on. Item five, hold you 368, modification number seven, Major Maude, St. Joseph's Health and Retirement Center. Christina Ruzari.
Good morning, Commissioner Bartels. Commissioners, for the record, my name is Christina Ruzari and I'm with the RMA Planning Division. Item number five before you is a major modification to existing CUP 368, the applicant of St. Joseph's Health and Retirement Center. The site of the Health and Retirement Center has been in the Ojai Valley since 1955. Looking at the site plan, or aerial photo of the site, the zoning, current zoning of the parcel is rural, 10 acre minimum parcel size, with the general plan designation of rural, and the the location, well, the site is containing two parcels, two separate parcels with a combined acreage of 14.57 acres. As you can see from the aerial, Gorham Road is to the west, Carney to the east, and Highway 150 abuts the project site to the south. Open space parcels are found on the north and the south portion, and rural is on the west portion. One historical note that I think is interesting is that this St. Joseph's Health and Retirement Center was the first SOAR vote in the county, which changed the zoning designation to what it is now. The part of description before you in this modification seven is the demolition of the existing skilled nursing facility and assisted living facility, and replacement of these structures with a two-story, 59-bed assisted living facility and a two-story, 58-bed skilled nursing facility. Also included is construction of a new 30-bed independent living facility. The total number of beds in all of this is 147, which is a reduction of 30 beds from the 177 that was was approved in the modification six. Before you is exhibit 10 that you have in front of you. It's just in a large site plan and it's the exact same site plan as found in the planning commission packet as well as on the PowerPoint presentation. The future independent living facility is here, the future skilled nursing facility is here, and the assisted living facility is here. I do also want to point out that there is approximately a 204-foot buffer from the property line to the edge of the building, and that will maintain the orchards that are here. And then this is just phase two of the project showing the construction of the skilled nursing facility. Looking at the project materials, staff determined that the appropriate environmental document for this project was a negative declaration as there would be no impacts, well, impacts would be less than significant to the environment. Some issues of note is that 2.75 acres of the existing orchards are to be removed with this project, and that is below the five-acre threshold found in the current initial study guidelines for the county. Also, construction noise will occur between Monday through Friday, 6:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and approximately 65 employees working in four eight-hour shifts are proposed when construction is complete on all the buildings. And as I mentioned before, 147 beds are proposed for this project. Just some quick photos of the site. This is the entrance to the site from Highway 150. To the left is where the future assisted living facility is going to be, and I can't really see it, but in the back is going to be the independent living facility. I do, oh, this is another picture of the orchards that are going to be removed as part of the assisted living facility. During the public review period for this project, staff received comments from the Native American Heritage Council and Caltrans District Seven, as well as the city of Ojai and the Ojai Valley MAC, which is, which has jurisdiction over the project, review jurisdiction over the project. All comments were received and answered, and the two comments from the state agencies are known as exhibit eight and nine in your packet. And also, this week we received a comment from Citizen, and that was also addressed and reviewed. So, recommended actions for this project. So I asked that the, well, Planning Division staff asked that the commission finds that on the basis of the negative declaration and any comments received in exhibit eight through, eight through 10, that there is no substantial evidence in light of the whole record before the county planning division that the project would have a significant effect on the environment, and certify that your commission has read and considered the information contained therein, and that it reflects the independent judgment of the county and approve the attached negative declaration, which is exhibit seven. And three, find based on the evidence presented in the staff report and at the hearing today that the non-coastal zoning ordinance permit standards for modification to the conditional use permit are met, and adopt a resolution adopting the proposed findings, section B of the staff report, that is approving major modification seven to the existing conditional use permit. So if you have any questions, I will address them now.
Questions? Right, I would open the public hearing and ask for disclosure. Commissioner Westner?
I have not visited this site since the modification six.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
I have not visited the site either.
Commissioner Molitor?
I've visited, I've been to the site many times over the years and visited people who were residing in the skilled nursing facility.
I've visited the site day before yesterday, but didn't, don't have any information beyond that. That's in the staff report.
I too last visited the site for modification six. Do we have a presentation by the applicant? Don't all leap up at once. I have one speaker card.
Good morning.
Morning.
I'm the only one that's a decrepit, I think, and the oldest one here. I thank the supervisors for listening to our case again. They have all the information. We have Christina, thank you, Ingrid, and McPherson, our architect, and our brothers. We have Stephen, Michael, Andre, and of course Scott, who keeps the place together. So I really don't want to tell you too much about the project because I'm not that informed. Been in Ojai 51 years this week. But I would like to tell you a short story if you've got 30 seconds, okay? I'm not trying to make it short. I came from Indiana, and I had equivalent to CPA, equivalent of engineering. Worked with my dad for 12 years industrial engineering. And I came out to Los Angeles. The brothers had just started there, short time before, in 57. So they said, "We don't need a CPA, and we don't need the engineer, you know? All we need is a person to take care of the sick," you know? So, okay, I said, "Well, what do I do?" You know? So they took me into these elderly people, and they gave me a man without arms and legs to feed. See, and that's the way I started out. And I found out one thing through all these years, to the fact when you give service, which is your mission, there's something that comes back to you from the patient, and that is love. See, when the elderly person somehow has to give up everything, whatever they have, the only thing they can give you is love. And can you receive that? See, that's the hard thing to do. Can you receive love from a patient? And that's what I had to learn in 51 years. But we do have, we were, in fact, in Ojai, St. Joseph, we were the first, I guess, to have a skilled nursing, first with Alzheimer's, first with AIDS, first with a lot of things. So we need a facility, and I really want to die. See, I have cancer. So the important thing is I can't die until this building gets put up. So it's up to you to give us permission. Thank you.
Thank you. Catherine Wector?
Well, that's a hard act to follow. I, my name is Catherine Wector, but first let me speak for my neighbor, so I don't forget that. Dr. Angus, who lives just west of me, where he adjoins my property. He couldn't be here today, so he spoke to me last night and asked me to speak for him. His comments, we share the same concerns, of course, as neighbors. Light and noise, I think you could summarize our two, you know, selfish concerns. We don't want to be able to or to have our, you know, our homes and enjoyment of our property impacted too negatively from those things. And his, his major concern is light. He's changing any of the night sky and so forth is his primary concern. So I told him I'd share that with you. For me, I live just, map's gone. I live, my house was built in 1906 and is just-
Catherine, one second. Christina, could we get the map back to the area?
Oh, cool.
There you go. Thank you.
Well, that's, that's great. You can see my pool, which is, which wasn't built in 1906, but before I was there.
Is there a, there's a pointer down there?
How do I do this? I don't want to take it off of me here. Yeah. Point at it like that. Point at it as you show me? All right, cool. So my house is right there. It's right there. So there's five rows of trees between my house and the, and the edge of their project to the red line, which would be the boundary of their project. So my house is there. It's just, it's right on the property line, basically, 40, 45 feet, Christina and I estimated. So there is a good distance, I think visually. They've made very attractive buildings and so forth, and I, you know, that's not a problem. My concern basically is noise that might, I have three concerns. Lights, of course, and lights in the parking lots. I'm not so concerned about lights from the buildings. That's at night and so forth, but lights from the parking lot and that, I am, I'm going to talk to the architect about that later and we'll and get more information. I'm not here to oppose the project. I'm just here to raise my flag. The value of my property and anyone else's will be negatively impacted by, that will go up as as the visual impact to the neighborhood and so forth goes up. So I know they've worked very hard, Brother Hugo and, and the architect and so forth, their planner. They've worked very hard to make this fit into the neighborhood, and I'm very appreciative of that. I am concerned about, I haven't, I'm not up to date on the new plans. My mother is in hospice, and I've been in Michigan quite a bit of the last year, so I'm way behind the curve. I didn't attend MAC for that reason. I apologize for trying to catch up on that. I'm concerned about where any loading facilities are. That would be the most source of noise, of course. I'm sure with food deliveries and trash and, you know, out and all of that, that the frequency of their deliveries will go up, and I would like to know about, about that, and I'm sure Mr. McPherson will tell me. I'm also very concerned about the location of the mechanical yard, which is without, on the building site, we will be able to see it on their new one, is very, is the closest thing, the closest noise source. That's probably a major noise source in the whole project, and that happens to be located closest to my house. I understand why it's been placed where it is, and I know they have planned a sound wall around it, and I'm hoping that will be adequate. There's nothing worse than air conditioning noise 24/7, and I'm sure they'll have to use that for the patients. I'm also concerned a bit about the detention plan. I'm downstream. There's some confusion in the staff report about where McNell Creek is. The blue line to the northwest is McNell Creek. It's not to the southwest as cited in your documents that were prepared. In the winter, when we do get rain, that creek overflows predictably and floods to the north of us. But the more, the site, the more impermeable surface that's added to the site, of course, causes more runoff naturally. Understand the detention plan is planned for the southwest because that is the natural course of drains from most of the property. And of course, the creek, I don't know how much the creek bed, the flow entering the creek from the project, perhaps it's minimal. I really don't know. But I know that it floods and floods to the northern portion of my, my property, and the, and Dr. Angus is downstream, and Ernesto Vega is, is downstream, and his property, though it's north, is really flooded. And was flooded two years ago quite a bit, and last year, actually. So those are, those are my concerns. I don't know how far the notice went, went out. I know it's 300 feet from the boundary of the site, so that's me. It doesn't include anyone else that might be, that's going to be downstream and, you know, that would be impacted from noise and light. I can hear, I know when there's a shift change, I can hear the car doors close, people saying goodnight to each other and all of that. Noise really travels at night. I don't know why that is, but it seems to. Maybe that's why I'm paying attention. So I'm not here to oppose the project. I just wanted to express my concerns and and appreciate your listening to me and my opportunity to, to work with the brothers, and I know they'll make an effort. I just wanted to be heard. All right? Thank you very much.
Questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no other speaker cards. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? If you could state your name for the record.
Good morning. My name is Bruce McPherson. I'm the architect for the project, and I just want to briefly address some of the concerns that our neighbor brought up, and we do appreciate that she came this morning and spoke up. It's always helpful in cases like this. Relative to the main issues of light and noise, with regards to the use of the site itself and our use, the project's intended use, our concerns are similar to hers inasmuch as that we don't want to change the natural environment to the point where our patients and our residents who come out there in large part for that environment, it's now changed and it's not what it was intended to be. Relative to light specifically, our intentions are to make sure that light, especially any kind of parking lot light standards is shielded so we have no glare that feeds off the site that would not impact our neighbors as well as our own residents. In terms of pathways and walkways, we're looking at using low-level lighting, light ballers and things to keep the light down. Relative to noise, again, we have the very similar concern that HVAC equipment and mechanical equipment, our residents are sensitive to that noise as our neighbors are, and so it's very much in our interest to make sure that that noise is mitigated and appropriate sound barriers are put in place. We will be working with our, with our neighbor to do that to the best of the ability to the technology that's available. Relative to the impact on the creek, there will be a detention basin installed that will ensure that there is not additional runoff at the peak rain times into the creek, which would exacerbate the flooding, the natural flooding that already occurs, and that's part of the conditions for the project. If there are any other questions, we'd love to answer them, and we look forward to a favorable, favorable opinion of your, on this project this morning.
Commissioner Molitor?
I'm, I don't know what, don't know where it is in the conditions that you're going to accept for this project, but I'm certain there's a complaint resolution procedure there where there's someone designated to receive complaints from homeowners who are nearby, and then that you would then respond to those complaints. I'm certain that's in one of the conditions. So that would help, I think, the neighbors to understand that if you say there's not going to be a lot of noise from air conditioning or so forth, then it happens, they have an avenue to approach you and to ask you to file the conditions, as you said you would, okay? Couple other questions. Water. Can you describe to me how you're going to have sufficient, I know it's in here, sufficient water for these new facilities?
It's a good question. We went through, with Casitas Lake, the water district, and went through a program to reduce the amount of water that we're currently using through upgrading of existing facilities to get us down to where we are allotment level that we needed to be with Casitas. We've currently gone through a large part of that program in upgrading the facilities. It has reduced our water significantly down to the allotment that we've agreed to, or that Casitas has agreed to with us. As the project moves forward, we're looking at implementing a number of water-saving efforts. One is that we want to use recycled water to water our, irrigate our landscaping. We're looking at increased water-saving devices in the buildings themselves with regards to low-flesh toilets, restricted fixtures in terms of faucets, that type of thing. Then also there is onsite water available for, not the potable water uses, but again, for onsite water as well through wells.
One of the things you're doing to reduce traffic is a shuttle. There's something about a shuttle. Can you tell me how that's going to work to get employees to and from the site?
As of this time, that, that plan for the shuttle doesn't, does not have a lot of definition to it. It is, it is one of the conditions that we have been working with the planning staff on, and we still need to go through the details on that. I can't give you more specifics than that at this time.
But that will be implemented as part of the plan.
That's one of the conditions to the site that we have to comply with.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Idukas?
Is the plan to remove the swimming pool? When I visited, I noted it was empty, and it appeared to have been empty for quite a long time.
Ultimately, the plan is for the pool to, to be removed and to, it's a nonusable pool, so we will be pulling it out.
Okay. And do you know where that condition is on Mr. Molitor's concern, the complaint ombudsman?
I don't. The planner might know better than I do, but I don't know where it is.
Okay, I'll wait until she comes back up there. Also, on those construction hours during demolition, is 6:00 a.m. reasonable? My impression, when I visited the site, is it was extremely serene and quiet. And I think there were services being held when I visited too. So the idea of a 6:00 a.m. start seemed pretty early. Is there any way to, to adjust that to a more reasonable time?
There is. One thing relative to construction hours is that clearly we would like to have no restriction on construction hours. Not that we would be starting construction at 4:00 or 5:00 in the morning, but what it does allow is at certain times, when necessary, for construction crews to be out doing things where there might be a condition that would require that. Typically, on a project like this, the actual construction wouldn't start until somewhere around 6:30, 7:00 o'clock, or even later, with crews starting to arrive at 6:00 in the morning. It's one of those things where we'd like less regulation on it rather than more to give us more flexibility, but certainly that's, that's something that we're not interested in. Again, causing problems for our neighbors in the site as well just allows us to be able to deal with situations as they might arise through the construction period.
My impression was that it would be something that could be looked at for the, for the people who are there. Not as much the neighbors as, as the people who reside there. Regarding the spillover for the light.
Yes.
Do you, are you familiar with what kind of light standards and whether it's spelled out here? Can you have a prohibition on metal alloy? Have something- Have something like a high-pressure sodium-type light?
Yes.
Is that in here?
I don't believe that's in there, but no, that's certainly what we would be looking at doing. And again, I want to stress is that the spillover of the light is, is in effect, is an impact to our residents as well as our neighbors. And it's something that we definitely don't want to have, we don't want to have an urban environment in this rural setting. And light at nighttime and the particular types of light at nighttime is, it really has, goes a long way in terms of, of setting the tone, setting the mood for the site. So no, we don't have a, a problem with some kind of a restriction like that.
Could we have a restriction on that? Because it's not so much the spillover as the glow.
Absolutely.
That people, there's terms of art that I'm not familiar enough with in order to say what I mean, but there's certainly a difference between the glow and the spillover. So if you could accept a condition saying no metal halide, that's that, it's that very harsh white light. It's, it's excellent in parking lots in an urban area because if there's, you know, crime, then it really helps give an accurate, people don't yellow, so I'm sure you're familiar with it. But in this, in this setting, I was, I was hoping that maybe we could address some of the neighbors' concerns about that glow with a restriction on that. Would you accept something like that?
Absolutely. We have no objection to that.
And, and last, no, you know what? I think that's all. Thank you.
Commissioner Batalis? Excuse me. Can I refer back to the point about the contact person and complaints that Commissioner Duquesne and I were talking about? If you look on page 28, under condition 16, yes. And then the next page lists the resolution of complaints, the contact person, and the process that needs to be followed by all persons who would have a complaint about not only the construction, but about the facility as it's operating. That I think is important, that the neighbors understand that, that there is a process in here to satisfy any problems they may have, not only during construction, but after, after the project is functioning. Thank you. Thank you.
Commissioner Wester? Questions? Commissioner Rodriguez?
Thank you. Excuse me. I also have a, have a concern or an issue with the noise potential, as well as the stated, I think it was up here on the, on the PowerPoint, stated construction hour is 6:00 until, I mean, historically, culturally, however you want to describe, construction seems to go from 7:00 to 3:00. And I have a real problem with construction starting at 6:00. There are accepted hours of privacy normally the community comes to expect, and certainly 6:00, I don't believe is that. My recollection is at 7:00 to 10:00 PM. And so I would have a problem with that, particularly in light of the comment that you made about trying to start before 7:00, expanding that window in traffic, et cetera, whereas arriving before that time that they feel they can start work. I mean, if we're talking 6:00, then you're talking about traffic coming in at 5:30 and 5:00. And I'm particularly concerned about the initial part of the construction where you're going to have demolition. And I envision trucks coming in and out of that area, whatever time they might come in. But if the construction hour is 6:00, then I see trucks rolling through the Ohio City and Ohio Valley at 5:00, 5:30, and, and I don't, and then I see further problems occurring because of that. So I personally would not want to see construction physically starting before, before 7:00, which is a norm, I think, in the industry. And, and sound does carry. It does have an impact on neighbors, whether it's, whether it's construction equipment or whether it's diesel vehicles coming on to and out of the property. It does have an impact. So I would, I think that needs to be looked at again as far as establishing a startup time.
If I can address the question, the concern. I appreciate your concern, and you are correct, sir, that construction normally starts onsite at 7:00. And frankly, we would not have an objection for that condition to be changed to construction starting at 7:00. My point of liking it at 6:00 is it does allow us some flexibility, but certainly that's not something that's a, that's absolutely necessary for that condition to be at 6:00. And as you, as you stated very eloquently, 7:00 is normal for construction to start, and that wouldn't cause us a problem. We would be open to accepting that, a modification to that condition, particular condition.
Thank you. The other thing I noticed, it's a discrepancy in the, in the data that was in the report. I don't know if you were the planner, who's the appropriate person to ask about that. But in, the report identified the new construction to be just over 100,000 square feet once all, all facilities are put together. And a couple pages further into the report, I noticed that the numbers identify as 95,300 some odd square feet. And I don't know how that discrepancy occurred. I'm just using a simple calculator to add the totals. If it's an error in the report or what's occurring there?
I, I don't know the answer to that. Calculators are our friends, and I'm glad you're using one. The, I'm looking on page five of the, of the report. And it's got the assisted living at just under 60,000 square feet, independent living at 18,195, and skilled nursing at 30,885. Those numbers appear correct to me.
Yeah. Yeah, they did also, and on page seven, on the first paragraph, under item two, about page, about line seven, it talks about the project that proposes the coverage of approximately 15% or 95,314 square feet for new and existing structures. Therein is a discrepancy.
Yeah. I don't know where that discrepancy came from.
Okay. Which is correct? Is it 100,000?
As I said, the table on, on page five appears correct to me for those numbers.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else from the applicant? Closing comments by staff? Okay. I would close the public hearing. Commission?
I'm, I stand very familiar with this facility, and I, I like its expansion, especially with the demand for these services with our population getting older. I would like to move to approve the conditions with the modification that Commissioner Rodriguez mentioned not to start the construction until 7:00.
And the metal halide?
Yes.
Light condition?
Yes.
Okay. So we have a motion for the recommended action with the addition of two conditions, no metal halide and a 7:00 AM start time. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
That is all the recommended actions, including the finding of the negative deck and certifying that we have read it. Is that what the motion is for?
Yes.
Okay. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Going to take just a minute here to reorganize ourselves for the next item. Let us continue. Item 6 LU 070088, United Water Conservation District. Terry? Terry Newman is the planner.
Good morning, commissioners. My name's Terry Newman, representing the Ventura County Planning Division. I'm here to present for your consideration a permit request on the part of the applicant, the United Water Conservation District, for a major modification to Conditional Use Permit 2949, a recreational permit which governs the operation of Lake Piru. Lake Piru is, if I can find the right spot here, is approximately six miles due east of Fillmore and approximately six miles due north of the town of Piru. Lake Piru was formed by a 22-foot-high, or by the 200-foot-high Santa Felicia Dam, which was completed in 1955. This is the access road to the facility. It bypass, passes by the Rancho Temescal area at the base of the dam. The lake itself is surrounded by some 5,000 acres of Rancho Temescal and the National The dam, as you see, it was completed in 1955. It's managed by the Water Conservation District. The dam was designed to catch the floodwaters from the Piru Creek watershed and store them for controlled lease, release, to, to maintain groundwater replenishment to the downstream aquifers. Limited recreational facilities were also built around the lake about the same time. CUP 2949 was approved in 1968. It was modified in 1970 and renewed in 1980. It encompasses all of Lake Piru as well as the Lisk Ranch north of the lake, and the existing permit expires in the year 2010. The district proposes to upgrade the recreational facilities at the lake, including, among other things, providing full hookup to RV camp sites, construction of a camp store, expansion of the existing restaurant, and enhancement of unimproved day-use facilities. Since the proposed project would add major elements not included under the existing CUP and would greatly extend the life of the permit, 30 years is the request, the planning director has determined that a major modification to the existing CUP is required. There's a detailed listing of the project description in Exhibit 3A of the staff report. As discussed in Section B of the staff report, we believe that the project has adequate urban services. It is, this determination is based partially on the fact that the project includes construction of a package sewage treatment plant, which will ultimately serve all or most of the area. Also, as discussed in the staff report, Section C, the staff believes that the project's consistent with the policies of the County General Plan and the Piru Area Plan. We also believe that, as conditioned, the project is consistent with the mandatory CUP standards. The discussion of the CUP standards occurs beginning on page 111 of the staff report. This project is somewhat unusual in that the County of Ventura did not prepare the environmental document under SEQA. A public agency can compare, can prepare the environmental document for its own project. United Water prepared its own project, a mitigated negative declaration, and adopted it in August 2099. Rather than the County of Ventura being the lead agency, we're in fact the responsible agency in this instance. As a responsible agency, we're required to review and consider the project mitigated negative declaration. Secondly, we are to reach our own conclusions on whether or not, and how, to approve the project. This means that your commission cannot change the findings of the M&amp;D. However, you can still approve or deny the project as appropriate and condition it as necessary in order to be consistent with the general plan policies or allow your commission to make mandatory CUP findings required by the zoning ordinance. The M&amp;D prepared by United Water proposed 41 mitigation measures, adopting the, and require, the required M&amp;D mitigation monitoring and reporting program. That's Exhibit 5 at the end of your document, page 325. United assumed all responsible, all responsibility for implementing and enforcing those mitigation measures. However, since the County of Ventura has land use authority over this project, we incorporated or exceeded virtually all mitigation measures when we wrote the conditions. The only mitigation measures not included applied to the, included, applied to the project elements which were evaluated in the M&amp;D, but which were not included in the CUP project description. This project was legally noticed with a notice published in the Ventura County Star Honor before September 10, 2008. In addition, surrounding landowners were sent notices. On October 1, the planning division received one letter regarding this proposal. That letter, identified as Exhibit A, is a request by the applicant to remove any references to a new replacement water tank and distribution facility as an element of this project. Due to the fact that those facilities are exempt from the county zoning ordinance in accordance with State Government Code, Section 53091, the county council has reviewed said code section and concurs that the project element falls outside the county jurisdiction. I provided amended copies of those pages in the staff report and project conditions which were affected by this determination. I don't, I don't know what exhibit number that is.
Seven.
Seven, thank you. I would note, however, that as a requirement of the mitigation monitoring program set in place by the mitigated negative declaration, they are still bound to maintain a visual preservation of the area with matters of screening and buffering any water tank that would be constructed. In addition to that letter, we have received a number of emails. Two of those were inquiries about, and clarification requests, which we, we conferred to the lead agency for response, and they have done so. There were an additional two items that were raised by Mr. Wally King, who's a, an adjacent landowner and not available at this time to come to the hearing, raising issues that United Water has indicated they can respond to following their presentation this morning. In summary, staff has reviewed the permit approval standards, supporting evidence and findings, the proposed project, finds the proposed project to be consistent with the general plan and zoning ordinance. It's also found not to be obnoxious or harmful, as conditioned, and would not impair the use of the surrounding properties. Therefore, staff recommends the following actions. One, to certify that your commission has read and considered the information contained in the final mitigated negative declaration dated August 2099, and the final supplement to the final mitigated negative declaration dated July 2007, attached as Exhibit 4 and Exhibit 4A. And, two, find that on the basis of the mitigated negative declaration and supplement attached as Exhibit 4 and Exhibit 4A, and any comments received, the project will not have a significant effect on the environment. And, three, direct the planning director or her designee And, three, direct the planning director or her designee to file the notice of determination in accordance with SEQA and the state SEQA guidelines. And, four, approve and adopt a resolution adopting the proposed findings, Section B of this report, and approving conditional use permit number LU070088, subject to the attached conditions, Exhibit 5. And, five, designate the planning director and resource management agency, the Hall of Administration, 800 South Victoria Avenue, Ventura, California, as the custodian and location of the record of these proceedings. And I'll be happy to answer any questions, or if you prefer, the applicant can provide you with their presentation. They have a PowerPoint they would like to show you.
Let's start with questions, Commissioner Molitor.
Let me be sure that I understand the area. Is this the dam and the area, is this owned? Is this owned by the United Water Conservation District? Is this their property?
That's correct.
Their property?
That's correct.
So this has nothing to do with any public? This isn't any city, or county, or state, or federal regulations? I mean, I'm sorry, ownership on this property? This is simply a private company, or water district, that owns this property, manages it, owns the dam, and owns the lake?
That is my understanding. That's correct.
Okay.
Wait a minute. It's a quasi-governmental agency, so let's be clear.
It's a management. That's correct.
This is a public agency. That's why they can do an EIR. And County Council may need to have an opinion about this, but this is not a private entity. Okay? Just let's not go there.
Well, that's what I wanted to have clarified. And that's been clarified. On Page 118, there's all the commission requirements, and it's kind of scary what we have to agree to and certify and everything that we've, you know, we actually read this and study it and so forth, but this, under three, planning commission role-related, required and so forth by the mitigated negative declaration. This public agency then has done their negative declaration. I really have to rely on the county planning department, as you have done, to go through and verify all of the things that they've said and so forth. Are you satisfied that they have met all these mitigated needs for this project?
Well, subsequent to the supplement that they created in 2007, of course, that was an expansion of the initial document. We did stipulate they had to expand in certain areas. That did not change the mitigated negative declaration or the supplement, but it did expand the conditions. So in that regard, yes, I think that we have substantially preserved the intent of the mitigated negative declaration by the conditions.
Okay, so we can rely on the fact that you've gone through this?
And we have, the staff has, at length, on many levels, evaluated the documents and confirmed that they comply with SEQA.
Thank you. I have some other questions for the applicant later. Thank you.
Do you think that we need to incorporate this as part of our approval, this Exhibit A, and reiterate the portion in the mitigated negative declaration that talks about mitigating the visual impact by any tank?
I think that, yes, absolutely.
So we can't just reiterate and redirect that we're referencing this document, Exhibit A?
Yes.
Because it just goes together.
That would be an appropriate approach.
And regarding these concerns about access and the property owner, let's see, we've got two emails, it looks like.
Those were, yes, received this morning.
How would you respond to these concerns?
Well, the conditions, I think, are respectful of those issues you might reference. For example, Condition Number 39. Let me see what page that would be on here. I believe that's Page 162. With regards to the need for the operation of this facility to work in concert with the surrounding landowners, and thereby we created the Agricultural Recreation Conflict Management Plan, which requires that issues, and I have not had a chance to carefully study the document, I would say that upfront, the emails, that is. But I believe that the majority of the issues that the gentleman raised would be covered by that particular condition. And certainly, there are others. But once again, without studying it, I wouldn't be able to assign the specific ones at this time. And that's one of the reasons, because it's an issue really between the lead agency and, in this case, Mr. King. They were going to address any of his concerns as part of their follow-up this morning.
Commissioner Wester?
I need a little clarification as far as the wastewater treatment. I see we're requiring an addition of a new plant. Is there an existing one there now? I don't see it stated in the report.
No, there isn't. They previously were on septic. Environmental health is, as indicated, that must be no longer the case in order to operate.
All right. All right, I'll save my questions for later. Thank you.
Is there a 30-year CUP request? Is there some specific reason why it's 30 years?
It's a function of the number of improvements involved. Well, and I'll let the lead agency stipulate the need for that period of time, but as it is a far-reaching project and a function of available funds, I'm sure that they're going to, it'll be an incremental project. We have constructed the conditions to have some elasticity in the order of improvements so that relative to a particular aspect of the project being funded, they can move around and accomplish it in a random manner, if you will, based on availability of funds and need.
So the construction is not based on a defined timeline? It's based on a window of time over 30 years?
That's correct. That's great. Essentially, what we would be issuing initially is a permit for the master plan. And then, as subsets of that, different zone clearances can be issued for different items. This will require a focused project description, stipulating exactly where, exactly what, and could have some supplemental conditions attached to that little aspect of the approval.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Just a comment to staff later on. What I'm going to be looking for is, we're adding a sewage treatment plant and how that relates to our Guidelines of Order of Development, the fact that no sewage systems are attaching to sewage systems. I really didn't see a clear conversation about that in the NMD. So just a little more clarity as we get further down the road on that.
I believe the applicant would like to make a presentation at this time. I'll be happy to answer questions.
I will open a public hearing, and I would ask the commission for disclosure. Commissioner Molitor?
I have nothing to disclose. I haven't visited the site recently.
Commissioner Dukas?
None.
Commissioner Wester?
Only flying over 12,000 feet in a jet counts.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
I've been to the lake, that area, many times. Nothing in the last seven, eight years, however.
I too have spent many hours on the lake, have been on the King Ranch in my lifetime, and know the area very well. We would hear from the applicant. Please introduce yourselves as you meander up.
Good morning, and thank you. I am Dana Weishardt, retiring general manager of United Water Conservation District. Incoming general manager is Mike Solomon, and he's here with us today also. As a local public agency, it's been our commitment to provide a recreational resource to this community, and we've been really pleased to work with the county all these years in partnership to provide those resources. As you know, it's been quite a while since we built the initial park, and it is quite outdated, and it's ready for refreshment and improvements that'll provide the recreational opportunities that people are looking for today, and that's what we're here about today. I do want to take a moment to thank Mr. Newman. He has worked diligently and very, very hard with us to bring this to you for your approval today before I retire. Today's my last day with the district. So thank you, Mr. Newman, and thank you for allowing us to schedule it today.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, my name is Stephanie Diaz, and I'm a land use planner working with the United Water Conservation District. And I've been with them on and off for many years. We did have an earlier proposal for a master plan before you, and I will review that in my presentation. I too wanted to thank Terry Newman. He and I have worked closely together, wordsmithing, going over issues, looking for exhibits and maps, and really putting together, I think he did a great job putting together a very comprehensive package, and it's something that United feels is going to be workable for them, and that I think the county feels covers their issues. So it's been a very good working relationship, and I appreciate Terry's efforts very much. We do have some members of our team here in case there are specific questions that are beyond the realm of a land use planner, as Dana indicated, from the administration side. We have Mike Solomon and Dana herself, and then we have Jim Grisham, who's kind of our engineer-type person for technical kind of questions, wastewater treatment plans and such. We have Michael Tessis from Rincon, who is our SEQA specialist, prepared our environmental documents. And then we have our supervising ranger, who you would never recognize because he has a suit and tie on, Clayton Statham, who has been out at the lake now for a couple of years and knows hands-on, day-to-day what goes on up there. What I'd like to do is give a brief overview of the lake and what facilities are there so that people in the audience, planning commissioners that may not have been there recently, or people who are watching, get a feel for the program. We call Lake Piru a rural recreation retreat. It has been open to the public since 1956. This is a recreational facility that is right in Ventura County's backyard, available for the locals. The first day that the lake actually opened to the public as a lake was in 1956, and I love this old photograph, the woman with her old 1950s glasses, and you can see the old cars in the background, and the big fish that they were pulling out of the lake at that time. This is an overview aerial of the lake, and the lake's purpose, one of its purposes is to collect local rainfall, and the second purpose is to provide recreational opportunities. And the main recreational opportunities are along the west side of the lake in this area. Of course, boaters take advantage of the entire lake, but campers, hikers, those seeking recreational opportunities use. This is what we call our core area in here with the marina and the camping. And then there's a second launch ramp and parking lot that's been built up here to kind of relieve the core area during the busy times. Let's see, I can get this to move on to the next slide. There we go. Oops. There we go, too fast here. I wanted to give some examples of the various kinds of recreation activities that occur up at the lake. It's not just a fishing lake. People get out with their boats, have a day of boating and picnicking. They also have water sports, tubing, water skiing. There's shoreline fishing in addition to boat fishing. We have campgrounds where people camp, and they take off for day hikes. There's a lot of bicycling, mountain biking, road biking that goes on through the area. And of course, there's always those beautiful panoramic views that people just like to spend a day out in the sunlight wilderness area, enjoying what we have right here in our own back country. This is a little bit of technical information I thought I ought to put on the record, and Terry Newman has referred to a few of these. The Santa Felicia Dam was created back in 1955, and a year later, the recreation area opened in 56, and it just had rustic camping, it had a little store and snack bar. You saw the picture of the people standing in front of it. The first CUP actually approved by the county was in 1968, and that allowed for some expansion of those existing rustic camping and little store-type uses. Continuing amendments were made to the CUP to increase and enhance the uses until 1994, when an amendment at that time extended the CUP until 2010. And that's one of the reasons why we are here before you now, because we have a two-year timeframe until that CUP expires. About eight years ago, now, I can't believe it's that long, we were before you in 2000 with an amendment to the CUP to approve basically the exact same master plan that you see here today. That permit expired before it was able to be inaugurated, and the expiration of that 2000 CUP was related to issues United had with trying to get a concessionaire, a contract with the concessionaire to come in and operate some of the recreational facilities, and that was a long process. There were also conditions set on that CUP that made the project economically infeasible. There were ties to doing this very expensive water treatment plant right up front, and we feel now that the conditional use permit modification and the conditions that are in front of you are more flexible, they will work, they will allow the master plan to be able to go forward at this time. A little more history. I wanted to talk a little bit about, to show you kind of what's happened with the permits, which is kind of how we judge the use of the facilities. At the highest peak, which was in about 1969, about 162,000 permits were issued annually for vehicles that came in to visit the lake. Currently, there are about 108 permits issued annually, so you can see there's been a drop. Currently, the number of permits that we issue on an average week and day is about 1,000, and a peak day permit, which might be a Memorial Day or a Fourth of July, would be 14,000. or a Fourth of July, would be 1,468. That is the highest number of permits that we have ever or will ever and are committing to under this new CUP. So there will be no change. We should close the gate down after those 1,468 permits have been issued. So that is our limitation, as it always has been. It will not change in the future. The one reason that we see that there has been a decrease in these permits is that day use and camping is affected by lake levels that vary greatly from the winter to the summer and from year to year. And that I'll talk about a little bit more in a minute. Our current request is to modify this CUP so that we can encourage people to come to the lake in the off-season times or on kind of a mid-week, mid-day kind of use where it's not just a weekend facility, but it's a facility that can be used more year-round and on other weekends and weekdays when they're not, it's not being highly used. We'd like to continue the theme of a rural recreation retreat. We're not trying to change the ambiance of the area. We'd like to allow the continuation of all the existing recreational uses that we have there. We'd like to remodel and upgrade the facilities. We feel it's kind of like having your 1970s tract home that has a shag carpet and the old dark wood paneling and you just sort of want to take that away and modernize it somewhat, make it more attractive to people. We are also asking to extend the CUP for 30 years and there was a question from a commissioner about that. I think there are three reasons. One is economics. We need to be able to go forward with projects when they're economically feasible, when the economy and the concessionaire or United is available, has the available funding to do that. Secondly, this is a phasing program. It's not intended that we just run in there and do everything at one time. We're going to phase in different projects as it seems appropriate and as are needed. And third, we think 30 years is appropriate because this is a long-term recreation resource for the county. It is an investment that United is making and it's an investment that the county is making by approving the CUP. And we believe it shouldn't be something that is up in the air and just moves along in short little spurts, but it should be given the acknowledgement that this is an important resource for the county and that 30 years would be appropriate. There are conditions for bringing back the CUP for review if any issues come up in the future or if modifications are needed. So the 30 years is really kind of a guarantee that that kind of use would continue. But there's always the ability to modify, to revisit through the years. I wanted to focus some discussion on what we call our core recreation area, which is right in here. To get you kind of established, we are looking south and the dam is right here. And if you come in on Piru Canyon Road, you can see it wiggling around down in here. You'll come in through the main gate and you'll end in what we call our core area. There's the Olive Grove Campground. There's the ranger administration building. There's a little snack bar called the Condor Point. There's a launch ramp and a marina. There's a little secondary launch ramp here. And there's some tent camping areas here. We have what we call our overflow campground. This is a large empty field area that is used on our big weekends and it's unstructured. People just pull their cars and their tents and their recreational vehicles into the area and kind of just camp in an informal area. And this is one of the areas that we would like to formalize into campsites. We also want to go back into this older campground and remodel it, bring it up to standards, provide utility services in there. There's a current day use area that's very popular in here and we'd like to continue to provide day use opportunities around the corner, right in this area. And this road, as you see, goes on out to a new launch ramp that has been constructed with a parking lot a little bit north of the road area here to relieve some of the use of the marina launch ramp. And to orient you a little bit, United does own all the property along the waterfront. This line that you see right here divides United's property from Rancho Temescal, which surrounds a lot of the property. There are some private property owners in this area here. And the US Forest Service obviously owns a lot of the land surrounding. They also have a ranger station right about in that location right there. See if there's anything else I wanted to point out to you. I want to talk for just a minute about the challenges and also hopefully opportunities that we have for the low lake levels. This is a picture showing how low the lake can get and it can get even lower than this. This would be a normal high-water lake level. And when the lake is up at this level, there's easy access. People can walk right down to the lake and fish and swim and play in the water. Once the lake has gone down, then all of a sudden there's a separation between the land uses and the water. The issues that we have with the low lake level is basically there's no access to the water. Sometimes what'll happen is newcomers will come to the lake and see this low lake level and then they don't come back. And the locals, knowing that the lake is low, will go elsewhere. We want to provide amenities that are not dependent on the lake level. We're proposing a swim pond. We're proposing a recreation building with a swimming pool and additional upgraded campsites where, say, a large family group or one of the traveling RV groups would come in and stay for a week or two and enjoy the trails, the hiking, the biking and other uses that are not so dependent on a high lake level. We feel that if we can provide year-round recreational opportunities for the locals, then they won't drive so far to other facilities. Therefore, we reduce vehicle trips and our carbon footprint. We're trying to be environmentally sustainable in that way. Our request is to continue existing uses: recreation, camping, day use, marina, launch ramps, swim beach. We do have an area of rustic group camping at what we call our Lisk Ranch, which is an area north of the lake. If you follow the Piru Canyon Road up north of the lake, that area is currently closed. But in the master plan, we would like to have the ability to continue allowing, it's just rustic camping in that area. There would be no increase in the peak number of permits issued on a day, which is 1,468. The uses we wish to enhance is increasing the total number of campsites from 408 to 415. So it's not a great increase in what is available for public use. However, we'd like to go in and enhance the existing campground and that overflow area that I showed you that was really just a big dirt lot and provide full utilities. And that way recreational vehicles could be accommodated. Right now, there are only about 11 full hookup sites out of 408. So this, by providing utilities into those sites, campers, car camping and tent camping can still use the site, but the recreational vehicles are more likely to come and stay for a longer period of time because they have those utilities. We'd also like to allow on part of these 415 sites, 30 trailer cabins. And I'll show you a picture of those. They're very interesting. You may have seen those at some of the other recreation spots at El Capitan and Lake Kachuma that I know of in this area have them. They pull onto the site. They're on wheels, just like an RV. They're the same size or smaller than an RV, but they're actually, instead of looking like an RV, they're built like a little cabin. And I'll show you a picture in a minute. We'd also like to do small additions to the existing restaurant and the camp store so we can serve onsite guests and reduce traffic trips. There's a dry boat storage area where, you know, old boats and new boats and boat covers and such are stored right in the middle of the core area. And we'd like to move that out of the core area so that it's not, you know, it's more of a maintenance use and we'd like to keep the core area more for the public and the recreational and having a more aesthetic look. There are some informal day use areas along the, right past our big day use area. And we'd like to formalize those, put in some picnic tables, a little shade ramada, some little vault toilets. And we'd like to enhance our refu center recycling areas. Here's a photograph of a site where a full hookup utilities could accommodate a recreational vehicle in our existing campground. We'd also like to attract groups. There are some clubs, RV clubs, that travel around together. And these people will come year-round and they'll stay for weeks. And this is the kind of thing that will help the lake have more year-round use. Oh, here's a picture of the trailer cabin that I was talking about, which are basically recreational vehicles on wheels, but they're built to look like rustic cabins and they would be rented out. We'd like to, as I said, formalize our overflow campground here. You can see people camping willy-nilly in the dirt areas. And I think it would be a much nicer experience if people had their own space and weren't walking through someone else's space to get out to the main road or to a trail. This is the existing Condor Point snack bar and we would have a small addition to that located in the same area. This is the dry boat storage area I spoke of and this is right in the center of the core area. We'd like to move it out. Here is a typical day use area that we have in Reasoner Canyon. You can see picnic tables, shade ramadas, a little rest, whoops. Back here, a little restroom over here in the corner. They're very low-key. They're very rural, rustic. We would do a similar thing just north of this area, kind of a continuation of this area. This is an architect's sketch of a camp store that we currently have a very limited camp store. Sells a little bit of bait and a little bit of supplies, camping supplies. But we would like to enlarge the camp store so that we could have a place for campers to check in, have a little bit more supplies. We could also have an area to have a display about the area, the natural resources, United Water Conservation District and what they do, sort of an educational display area. The upgrades that we're asking for is about an 8,000-square-foot recreation building right in the core area. It would have a game room, a kitchen, laundry and a swimming pool, things that would encourage longer camping stays and would serve the recreation vehicle crowd. In the infrastructure, we'd add a new wastewater treatment plant, some road widening, fire hydrants. The fire department has also asked for some designated heli spots so that when they have a medical emergency or they have fire emergencies, we have designated areas. We have one of the helicopter pilots come out and talk about where best they can come in and get out without getting entangled in trees and signage and wires and that kind of thing. And so we have identified those as part of the plan and United will be providing that. We will add a swim pond that will be, have water available at all times by our new north launch ramp area so that when there's low lake levels, the kids can still get in and splash around in the water. And we're also looking at allowing some personal watercraft in a small designated area at the far end of the lake. Here's a slide looking, once again, you're looking south towards the dam. And this is the new parking area that's been built to serve the launch ramp. This is just going right outside the picture there. And the swim pond would be put right about in this area. So there's already public parking and there are restrooms available to serve this swim pond. There we go. Here's another view just of that same parking area and you're looking now towards the launch ramp, which unfortunately is hidden behind these trees. But what we're proposing is that this small area up here at the far north end of the lake could be a limited personal watercraft area. We have, United as a lead agency, has done SEQA environmental review. As Terry noted, we do have a mitigated negative declaration and we also did a supplement to update that. There were mitigation measures called out in those documents. All those mitigation measures have been, that apply, have been made a part of the CUP and there's a mitigation monitoring program as part of the CUP. And United has committed to those mitigation measures. In conclusion, our request is to continue the uses that have been at Lake Piru for the past 50 years with some upgrades and remodeling. We want to better provide service and attract longer and off-season camping stays. We want to meet the current camping trends and the expectations of the public when they come into the facility. And we want to encourage local use of the recreation area. And that concludes my presentation. I did want to reiterate that there was one item that we had as part of the CUP and that was a water tank. And as Terry explained, it's been determined that by state regulations, that water tank is exempt from county permitting. It is something that's part of a public water agency's jurisdiction and their ability to provide it. So we would like the CUP to strike any reference to the water tank. And as I understand it, there's only one condition number, condition 22, that has, speaks to the water tank. And then there's exhibit 3A, which is a matrix, which lists all the uses. And the very last line of that matrix says water tank. And we'd like to have that taken out. So when the CUP is actually published and stamped approved, that condition number 22 would be revised and that exhibit 3A would be revised so that there's no confusion about the water tank in the future. I'd like to address, there were two emails that came in from the same individual, Mr. Wallace King. And the first item he brings up is trespassing from United's customers onto his property. And we wanted to let the commission know that our rangers are patrolling and that we, any complaint that they get from a private property owner is acted on immediately. That United has provided additional fencing in the area to prevent that type of incursion. And there's also condition number 15 in the CUP has a complaint resolution process built in so that the, if the property owner feels that there's, they need to step out and get additional help, they can come to the county with a complaint and there's a resolution process there. The second item that is raised in this letter is that camping is occurring in an area... area that hadn't been used before. Let me move forward. I did put the site plan up here. There's, on a very few busy weekend holidays, some small tent camping spaces are allowed. This is our, our day-use area. And there's kind of a little open unused area. And just a few tent camping spaces have been allowed in this area right there. And I think that's what he's speaking to at this point. That's not a standard camping area. It's not proposed to be improved or be a standard camping area. Item number three talks about plans to have events at the lake. Back in the year 2000, when United came forward with the first request for an amendment, there was talk about allowing special large events, having an event venue below the dam, south of the dam area. And that has since, that idea has been put aside. The CUP boundary has been drawn at the Santa Felicia Dam. So that area is not even under consideration. There are small events that occur at the lake, a fishing derby, a church group, a electricians' union, they're all day-use kind of things. Maybe the church group would camp for the weekend. Those, we don't really consider special events. We consider them group use. And there is no proposal at this time for any large events in the area. The last item here talks about doing something about invasive plant species around the lake. And there's actually a condition that's been put on in the CUP requiring United to go out and do the best thing, the best they can at getting rid of invasive plants. That, obviously not those that their seeds blow, because we can't do much about that. But other ones that we have an eradication program going out and taking those plants out. So that's a condition of approval. On the second email that came in this morning, the first question raised is unimpeded access through United's entry gate. And actually, we're a little confused about this because there is a separate lane for property owners. They can just drive right through the entry gate at this time. So I'm not sure what the concern is at this point. Item number two talks about when the county turned the last mile of the road over to United, United was to maintain it. And once again, we're a little confused about that. United does maintain every portion of the road that is within their jurisdiction. They do not maintain any part of the road that is county-owned or that is US Forest Service-owned because it is not within their jurisdiction. But those portions of the road that are within their jurisdiction, United does maintain. And that will end my presentation. If you have any questions for me, you know, land use matter or overview matter or any more technical questions for our team, we'd be glad to answer those.
Mr. Molotov. A couple of questions. On page 103, it talks about water service. And it says, "The proposed water source," this is number two, "the proposed water source for the project would remain surface water from the lake." Do you process the, you take lake water and treat it for drinking? Is that what you do? You've got a plant there that does that?
Yeah, let me have Mr. Jim Grisham, who's our engineer, talk to you a little bit about that.
Jim Grisham, Senior Engineer, United Water Conservation District. Currently, the district provides water service to the recreation area from the lake. We have an intake barge, and it goes through a water treatment process and then into a storage and distribution. We are currently, the plan operates under a permit from the State Health Department. And we are looking at replacing the water treatment plant because of aging and maintenance is, the plant's been deteriorating. And we hopefully, within a year, hope to have that treatment plant replaced and bring it up to state codes and new surface water treatment rule conditions.
Thank you, Mike. Second question has to do with the lake filling. Has the, has the lake ever filled to the point where there was overflow in the dam?
Oh, not on the dam itself.
But you have a side over.
Yes, we have a spillway.
You have a spill, yes.
We're essentially a, what we would call a pass-through facility. When the lake hits capacity, we are not, we are not a flood control structure. So when the lake gets full, it goes over the spillway. And the last spill was in 2005. We average a spill approximately five to six years.
Okay, so there's no chance that the lake could ride to the point where water could overflow the dam?
We've had some very extreme problems, but that's part of our dam safety program. One thing that's not mentioned is that we're also regulated by the Division of Dam Safety. And we're licensed under the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission that oversees that. And currently, we have flood studies going on. They're constantly changing the model of how badly it can rain. But that's part of our dam safety program.
And then on page, you don't have to look up, on page 239, they talk about mitigation of possible dam problems. And you're going to set up a system to notify people down from the dam if there's any problem with the dam or any possibility of dam failure, similar to what we get from Crestedus. I hear the alarm going off when they test it.
We have alarms in the town of Piru, audio alarms that go off, and they're tested regularly on a monthly basis. We also have an emergency action plan that is, again, is overseen by both the federal and state regulators. And we have exercises on an annual basis. And then every three to five years, we have a larger exercise that actually involves all the communities downstream of the dam and all the responders and cities and other municipalities.
Thank you for some good answers.
Commissioner Wester?
You said that one of the main reasons this wasn't feasible when we approved this back in 2000 was the wastewater treatment plant, is that correct? What has changed since then that you now, because we appear to be conditioning you for to do that? And understand where I'm coming from. I'm in favor of that, okay? I just want to make sure we go about it the right way. So what has changed?
What has changed is the, the 2000's conditional use permit had a requirement that the wastewater treatment plant, which is a very expensive investment, had to be done right up front. There weren't little improvements. We couldn't, you know, provide a small day-use area or do other small improvements until we put that plant in. Now, the way the CUP is set up is that we can go forward and do small improvements. It's not until we do something that requires wastewater treatment and expansion to the restaurant, the changing over of the campgrounds into full utilities, which would have sewer service to them. So once we do something that requires wastewater treatment, then we do the plant. And it makes sense because then we're doing a larger project that will be more revenue generating, and there'll be an offset for that expense.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Dukas?
I have two questions. One is kind of clerical. We've got this, this letter, exhibit A, that reiterates the MND regarding the visual impacts of the water storage tank. Can't it just be referenced in this condition 22? Just to reiterate that, that it will be screened by planting trees and painting the tank in appropriate colors mixed with the hillside?
I think the reason it should not be in condition number 22 is that condition number 22 is part of a conditional use permit issued by the county. And anything to do with that water tank is not within the county's purview.
I think location of the water tank is not within the county's purview. But certainly mitigating visual impacts of, would be.
In order for United to build that water tank, they need to have an environmental document. So this environmental document that we have provided to the county is also United's, United's environmental document that covers that water tank. So they already have a mitigation measure incumbent upon them to do that screening. And they have indicated to you in that letter that they fully intend to carry out that mitigation measure. So there is already a connection for that mitigation measure to be tied to the water
Moving on then. In that, in that area to the north, can you go to the slide that shows the campgrounds that have been closed? And talk a little bit about how long they've been closed and why?
Oh, the, the Lisk Ranch area. I'm trying to think if I've got a very good picture.
You might need, well, you might need like the overview.
We might have to go to the, uh-oh. Let's see. I don't know how I got onto this. Well, we'll just, I wonder if something, someone in your audiovisual is running this. There we go. Focus on, I'm clicking here and it's not, there we go. The Lisk Ranch area is located to the north of the lake.
And can you talk about when that was opened, when it closed, and what the challenges were of that area and what the plans are for its future?
Tim, would you be the best person to talk about the history of the Lisk Ranch? And I know that there was some flooding and removal or?
I don't have the dates clear in my mind. District owns approximately 550 acres north of the lake. And when the dam was constructed, our flood plane was going to take out the lower portion of the Lisk Ranch where most of the farmable land was located. And that's, the owner said, basically, if you're going to take that land, you're going to have to take the whole thing. So that's why we have this parcel of land up at the north end of the lake to begin with. And Clayton and I are trying to figure out when the last time we actually used that facility. But we had to close that area and for the same reason that the Forest Service closed down Blue Point Campgrounds because of the royal toads in that area. And in 2005, we lost what, what facilities, corrals and fences that were up there at that time. And we were not using that facility even in 2005. But the royal toad is an endangered species, so we had to keep people out of the bed. So the restrictions on when you can let people in and not let, and take people out doesn't make it feasible right now at this time to use it. I hope I answered the question.
Well, no, I'm not, I'm not completely satisfied with that answer. Because what I'm familiar with is from years and years ago, there being a problem with illegal activities in the area. So how is that being addressed with, with this? Because it still goes on. It's pretty, maybe, maybe the, this fellow can answer me.
I know prior to, my name is Clayton Strahan, supervising park ranger at Lake Piru. Prior to the royal toad issue, there was a campground north of the lake that was a Forest Service campground, Blue Point campground, and it was closed down. At this point, there's no access beyond the Juan Fernandez Launch Ramp, the northern launch ramp. There's a Forest Service gate that's locked that public cannot access past that point. The only people that have keys to that are Forest Service, United Water, USGS, some of those people, and, and private landowners.
And whoever they invite?
Yes, if they have permission. For the most part, we know most of the landowners, we have pretty fairly good relationship with them. If we see a car that is unusual to us, we'll make contact with them and talk to them. Anybody that's not supposed to be back there that, you know, we have people frequently that'll try to cut the locks during deer hunting season and things. We keep a pretty good eye on that to keep people out of that end of the lake. We don't normally have a problem with it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yeah, before you go sit down, I've got a couple more questions. What are your workload indicators? What are your workload indicators from a ranger's perspective out there?
Like how busy are we? The, the, most of our, most of our work comes in, I would say, between April 1st and October 1st. That's obviously our peak season, when people are coming to the lake. In the off-season, we do light maintenance, more, more of that kind of stuff. We transition into doing training and stuff like that. But most of our busy work is in the summer months when we're doing patrols, enforcement on, you know, safety issues for boating, safety life jackets, boat inspections, those kind of things.
And what sort of, what sort of statistics do you show for issues related, those calls for service that you provide or you're called upon to act on?
Oh, I can't give you an exact number on that. But I would say typically, like in, I know last year, we only had five calls to the Sheriff's Department for things that were major or they had to come. It, it all depends on, you know, it depends upon the lake level. If the lake level's high and we have more people in the park, we're doing more because there's more problems going on. It kind of goes in phases. I mean, I can't give you a super accurate answer on that. Would have to get records to show you like the number of calls that we have and that, et cetera.
Yeah, I guess that's what I'm looking for. And the reason I ask is, I too have a long memory, I guess, having worked for the county and at one point overseeing all police services for the sheriff west of, western part of the county, including this area. I know about calls for service and the number of times we respond, we've had to respond for a variety of reasons to the lake, either at the request of rangers or campers or property owners that have become confrontational to the point of weapons being drawn. And that's why I'm asking, because this, this report makes a point of talking about police protection and talks about the staffing level of three, maybe four at a time, I assume, officers at a time. And I assume that'd be during the peak hours that you're talking about. And I don't know who put this information in this report, and I'm referring to page 104, where it talks about police protection and identifies police response out of Piru. Best guess, that's probably a storefront for a community service officer, maybe a schools officer, hardly an enforcement response from the sheriff. I would suspect that, as I know, all police services are coming out of Fillmore.
Correct. We, we work real close with Captain Hegel, who is the chief police there in Fillmore. We have regular meetings with them to kind of discuss any issues that have been going on. And we try to, all the ranger training, we go to the Sheriff's Academy now to get our training with them. So that we're kind of on the same page. Since I've worked there in my two and a half years there, I've never had an issue of, two and a half years, I've never had anybody pull a weapon on me or been in a situation where I felt threatened to the point where I thought I was going to be in danger for my life. I know in the past, there were some issues prior to my coming in that I, I think you might be referencing to. That I can't really speak to, I wasn't there. But since I've worked there, there hasn't been anything that I could say, well, someone pulled a firearm on somebody, somebody was, their life was threatened, nothing, nothing of that nature, since I've worked there.
What have you done or what does the lake do to resolve issues as we identify here from Mr. King's emails related to trespassers and disturbance issues?
If we are on a patrol and we see somebody trespassing, we will stop and make contact with them and escort them off, contact the sheriff, have them come up if we feel that it's necessary. If a landowner calls us and asks us to come out, we'll make contact with the people and ask those people to leave immediately, find out where they're staying, go over the rules with them. And if they're doing something destructive or something that follows, that requires legal issue, we'll, we'll contact the sheriff at that point.
You and your people are sworn peace officers in California?
We are limited peace officers.
Okay. You have the ability to enforce trespassing crimes as identified?
Yes, yes.
So you have the ability to address?
We can lawfully detain, yes, and tell the sheriff. We don't have really the ability to transport because we don't have the resources. So if we do something like that, it's just easier for us to contact and work with the Sheriff's Department real closely.
About this complaint about, you referenced it, I think, in the tents that were, that were put- were put into the informal day area. Obviously, they're allowed to remain there. Is there any sort of enforcement issue that goes on to prevent that from happening? Or is it just kind of quite, just... Before I sit here and listen to your presentation and reading the complaint, it might appear that if that activity was prevented from happening, you wouldn't have that complaint here in front of us today.
I think that's something that United would need to talk about and see whether or not it's a situation that seems to be, you know, creating a conflict. And, you know, this is really the first time that we've been, it's been pointed out to us that someone was not happy about the situation. And it's not, it's not vehicle type camping, it's more your backpackers or your tent camping type of people that have been using that area.
And that's why I'm asking because if you have an enforcement arm and you know it's a problem, it seems like to me that your enforcement arm would address those issues immediately. And it doesn't appear like that's happening, if this email is correct.
Yeah.
Another question about the permit, I think you mentioned 1468 day permits. That would be, any special events would be inclusive within that total?
Correct.
Okay. And that, that number of day permits does not include campers?
Yes, it does.
So extended, it also includes RVs?
Right, it's a, the number of permits, cars coming through the gate, and once 1468 have come through the gate, then it's closed.
Whether they're for the day overnight?
Yeah.
What's the maximum length of time an RV can spend in the campground?
Oh, boy. Let me see if I can remember. Is it 90 days within 120-day time period? Does that sound right? Pardon? Right, right. So they can stay 90 days within 120-day period.
Okay.
That number she's referencing is for our, like camp hosts, for people that come in to do work camper. For campers, it's 30 days in the winter time and 14 days in the summertime that they have. And then in order, when they reach the maximum number of days, they have to remove their vehicle for two, for 48 hours, two days.
Okay. So you have a camp host that's up there?
Yes, our consecutive service has what's called work campers, which are retired people that come in and just do light maintenance, like clean up trash and that stuff for a free space, basically. And there's several of those in our residence area that they have, which is, they can't stay more than 90 days.
Okay. Thank you.
And in reference to the issue for the camping in the area, we do have ordinances through the county, park ordinances, that if we see something similar to that, we will write a citation for illegal camping or anything that's inappropriate, that violates one of the rules.
Oh, yeah, I assumed that, but my comment was that it would appear from the complaint that it's not being enforced.
That's, that was the comment made, yeah.
Thank you. Commissioner Dukas?
I just wanted to follow up. What's the patrol of that northern area? How often is it?
You're talking the northern area past the launch ramp?
I'm talking about the wild, that wild spot.
Well, right now, the Rancho Timiscal Fire Station there, the US Forest Service, they have a patrol unit that's assigned to that area and the Ojai area. Every day, he makes a routine patrol through that area. Just depends on what time he makes it, you know, some days he'll go to Ojai first or some days he'll come to our end of the world first. And we try to make as frequent visits up there as we can, but that depends on what's going on in the core area of the park that we make a patrol up there.
Is, are the picnic tables and the logs and everything and the old fire rings, is that all gone or is that still there?
I think you're referencing the Forest Service Campground, Blue Point, and most of that burned in this last fire that we had. It's just basically a little bit of asphalt and a few brick restrooms that don't have tops on them anymore.
All right, thank you very much.
It's not really campable.
Other questions? Thank you.
At this point, I'm going to take testimony. I have two cards. Mr. Matthews, you had a... Yeah, well, actually, we'll take a 10-minute break and then we'll organize this testimony. Back in 10 minutes. Are we ready? Okay, I have a statement card from Dan Matthews and a speaker card from Tessa. And Dan, you were raising your hand, so I know you do want to speak. But Tessa, why don't you go ahead and then we can, Dan, you're representing the King Ranch, so. Tessa Bernhardt, if you could state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, my name is Tessa Bernhardt. And do you need my address? It's 401 West Los Olivos Street, Apartment 7, Santa Barbara, California, 93105.
Thank you.
Good morning, commissioners and Mr. Chair. My name is Tessa Bernhardt, and I'm a master's student at the Bren School of Environmental Management at UC Santa Barbara. I am speaking today on behalf of Los Padres Forest Watch. Forest Watch is a community-based nonprofit organization dedicated to protecting the Los Padres National Forest and other public lands along California's central coast. I thank you for the opportunity to speak today on the proposal to update the master plan for the Lake Piru recreation area. And I apologize for not getting the map that I provided to you guys a little bit sooner. Lake Piru is an area of stunning natural beauty that provides many recreational opportunities, including camping, boating, swimming, and hiking. Numerous public hiking trails originate in the foothills surrounding the lake and lead into the Los Padres National Forest. Two such trails are the Pothole Trail and the Agua Blanca Trail. These two trails provide the only entrance to the sespy wilderness in the area. Unfortunately, access to these public trails is severely hindered by the fact that in order to reach them, United Water charges would-be hikers up to $10 per vehicle to enter the recreation area. Then, as illustrated in the map, potential users are forced to park miles from the trailheads due to a lock gate on the roadway. From the lock gate, one must walk approximately 2.8 miles to Pothole Trailhead and 4.5 miles to Agua Blanca Trailhead. Now, United Water may contend that if individuals don't want to pay the fee, they can park outside the fee area and walk in. However, recently, more than a dozen no parking signs have been placed along a half-mile stretch of the road leading to the payment kiosk, forcing the public to walk even further to reach these public trailheads. It is unreasonable to charge a fee of $10 for access to these public trails, especially when the access provided is highly restricted. The stated intent of the proposed project is to increase the use and attractiveness of Lake Piru for recreational users. Certainly, amplifying the use of public hiking trails such as the Pothole and Agua Blanca Trails should be included in this objective. Therefore, in order to achieve this stated goal, I respectfully suggest that a modification to the master plan requiring the elimination or significant reduction of the day-use fee charged for those wishing solely to access these public trails be considered. The community deserves open access to these precious resources. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Questions? Commissioner Dukas?
Okay, so when I was questioning about the area that was locked, how far away from that lock gate can you abandon your car and then get started to get to the trailhead?
If you look on the map that I provided, right below the rural triangle, I think that's the northern boat launch that they've been speaking of, and there is a parking lot where you can park there. But to get to that parking lot, you have to pay the $10 fee to get in through the recreation area. And so that is what my main point is, is that people who want to access the trails are hindered because they need to pay the fee to get in. And then, and then they have to go through, the only access to these trails is through the recreation area, even though the trails are US Forest Service trails.
Okay, and they don't hook up in another trailhead area? There's not another, I don't know what to, what?
Another end to the trail. It's fairly far away, so I would consider this the closest access point to those trails.
Where is, how do you access the other end of these trails, though?
I believe there may be access through another trail up through the Santa Paula area, past Timber Canyon, but I'm not positive on that.
Okay, so in terms of being able to drive to it, park your car, use it for the day, this is the, this is the closest one. Are there any other fees associated with using a recreational area? Do you have to, you know, have a pass on your car to go to the national forest recreation area?
No, I don't believe so, not from here, just the fee to get through the entry kiosk.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Commissioner Malott?
Yeah, with this map, I'd like to follow up on Commissioner Dukas' comments. So what this map shows me is that I go into the entry kiosk and I pay $10. And then I drive up and I, and I park by the locked gate?
Yes.
And then I walk. There's no way you can drive beyond that lock gate if the gate were open, right?
Right, and I'm not requesting that the gate be open. I understand that it, you know, was closed off originally due to the royal toad and after the closure of that campground and the problems that you discussed earlier. I'm just requesting that for people who don't want to use the recreation area during the day, they solely want to go through it to get to the trails, that then there may be a reduced fee somehow.
Could you give me a rough idea of how many people would use this trail on a weekend?
Well, Forest Watch has about 1,300 active members, and many of them have expressed concern about having to pay the fee to get through here. So, you know, I can't give you an exact estimate, but I know that many people still do use the trails and people from the Sierra Club in the area as well.
Are you aware of any other areas where you have to pay to get in to get to a trailhead in this area?
Not in this area. Am I aware of, there are a few other places where that is definitely the case, but we're also working to hopefully change that as well.
Thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
Dan Matthews?
For the commission's reference, Dan had originally put in a statement card, but he had talked to me before and I expect he has some issues.
Thank you, Commissioner Bartels and the rest of your commissioners. Like you said, like you said, I'm Dan Matthews. I'm a tenant for the King Ranch and Mr. Wally King.
Your address, Mr. Matthews?
I'm at, I'm at 811 Valley Vista, Fillmore. And I'm at the King Ranch every day. And also, my family has property up Dominguez Canyon, okay? Just to point out, I'd like to go through shortly another different items that Mr. King's written out and also to verify this young lady's comments. One of the main issues that myself and the King family has is trespassing problems. Throughout the years, we've had many trespassers on their property, kids, adults, families. And with those items, we've had many back, not backfiring, but trouble with those people to get out. Matter of fact, not to be disrespectful, but we've had some people in their, two couples in their band in the property, having sex issues on the property. And this young lady here has mentioned about fencing, that they redid some fencing. To my knowledge and testimony, I haven't seen any new fencing, and the ranch personally has put their own fence up. Their attorney, Mr. Greshler, we contacted the office on the trespassing problem, and their attorney wrote back and told Mr. King to make their fences higher. Now, with this new program, our new master plan is going to be put up. I'm going to throw down some of these notes. I can't, I don't think Mr. King will buy the fact that these new programs and with their new recreation, they're going to abide by that 1,400 tickets being sold. And I don't think, like I say, I don't think he will abide by that because of the more facilities, there'll be more traffic, and the noise problem. We've had plenty of noise at the ranch during the day and at night, very high noise. The second one, on the overflow, when it's, when the overflow capacity, we get a lot of overflow on the property. And this gentleman here, the ranger, he's been around for quite a years and he's done a fantastic job. And, but we still have the trespassing problem. And we're, I'm trying to, I'm speculating it because more people, we have more problems. More problems with us redoing our fencing, more problems with us taking, be more watchful. When, with my family watched the dam being built, we were also under the understanding that where that west corridor, she was calling it, wouldn't be for recreation, would be only for water storage only and nothing else. On the, on the deal with the third lane question, a few years back, Mr. Bill King came up with an estimate of $5,000 to put a third lane. Right now, there's an island in between the out lane, there's an island, there's a lane that's being used now for residential slash customers and the gatehouse, and there's other ones. And what the, what Mr. King was talking to the old manager about is getting rid of the island for our own personal lane, just for the safety of the gatehouse employees and also for our own going in and out with no distraction. So that's what the third lane was, was going to be about. And the, he was wanting to mention about the, he mentioned about the upgrade of the road. Well, there's, just like Pittsburgh, it's all full of potholes, okay? So I don't know where they're getting, and I think that's what Mr. King would probably want to tell too, that what about the pothole problem? And like I mentioned over the tickets and the, and we need, and the patrol, if there's more people throughout the year, we will have a lot more people on the ranch, okay? A lot more noise, a lot more traffic, a lot more problem across the street. I've seen people, I've seen kids go over the bridge with skated. I asked them, how do you get there? Well, they busted down the fence, okay? They showed me. They walked around the rock and they told me, just did this and crawled through. And I said, well, you're going in my yard. You own all this? Yes. Well, sorry, we just wanted to get some frogs, okay? Want to get some toads and all this and that. So with more people going to be going up to the lake, there'll be more people and damage to the property. One summer, there was a family who went right past the house and destroyed one of our trees because we wanted to play on it. Well, could I play on your house? And then that's one of the things Mr. King would probably rely to you is that, hey, we don't want a new plan. Why is because it's going to damage and hurt the ranch, more noise on, more noise impact. There's a certain group that comes in there, they're nice people, but their, their music and announcements and everything, they bounce off the canyon, clear up Brezner Canyon, clear up Dominguez Canyon. And yes, I've personally heard there will be more events going up and we, no, we asked it, there's no more, it shouldn't be done. You're going to put in, they're offering or show it on the picture, you're going to put in a swim facility, well, and they want to keep the area rustic, well, they'll be pulling out brush. A while back, when they were going to redo their new launch ramp, they pulled out a, we call a gum rope, an old historic... we call a gum rope, an old historic eucalyptus trees. They pulled out one, we drive by now and they didn't need to. And that was all part of the canyon at one time, years ago. So to, to me and the family, they're, they're, they're doing things that will cause the ranch and the area damaged. And, uh, basically, we don't want any more problems for the ranch and any more people. And, uh, and that's pretty much what read on Mr. King's report and his, uh, concerns. And I just wanted to ver- verify what this young lady was talking about, to verify about where's the new fence, potholes, uh, you're not, we're not gonna sell any more tickets, but we don't buy that. And there'll be more patrol hazards and, and concerns. They don't have enough now, even though this gentleman's doing a fine job. We get along with him, but there's gonna be a lot more problem that they have now and, and we don't want it, okay? That's all. Thanks.
Don't go with any questions? Anybody?
We have a complaint procedure in the, in the new conditions too. From what you're saying is that in the past, you made complaints and they haven't been properly addressed by the Water District. Is that right? That's what you're telling us?
Yeah, we were told to make our fences higher.
Dan, if you could, can you?
Uh, the King family has been, made a complaint and their lawyers ask us, our own, to make our own fence. And if you don't want your, our people to go on your property to make, to make your family's fences higher and build a higher wall herself. And that's, that's not right. And if that's gonna be the case, uh-uh, then that's not right. Uh-
Maybe I should ask Patrick this on the county council.
And we were, uh, he was very upset about that, very, um, like a slap in the face, I should say. No repairs to a fence, we had to do it.
I, I, I guess my question, either county council or Patrick, is what happens when the complaint is not properly addressed? Were the complaint feels that the complaint hasn't been properly addressed? Is there an appeal? I mean, there's a contact person for the complaint. What happens if he says, "I made a complaint, they haven't responded"? What does the homeowner do next?
First of all, we have to determine whether or not the complaint is associated with the conditional use permit and the CUP conditions, uh, whether or not it would be a violation of those, uh, conditions. And that's our primary course of action associated with the complaints. If it's a civil matter between parties, then the county generally does not get involved. So, um, that determination would have to be made on a case-by-case basis. So, I don't know if that answers your question.
I just wondered then if the, if the conditions as they're written would probably, would, would be able to resolve these, these complaints. I, you're talking about a fence, is, you know, about the fact that there's a, the fence isn't keeping out the people from coming onto the property of Mr. King. Uh, is that in, is it in the condition that, that the fence has to be, uh, produced by the Water District? Or is this the responsibility of the homeowner? I, you know, if I have a problem with my neighbor, I can build a fence. I build a fence. I can't say to my neighbor, "Your dog's coming into my yard, so you build a fence to keep your dog from coming into my yard." But how does that work with, with this particular CUP?
We have Condition thirty-nine, which addresses a conflict management provision. So that, that aspect is in place. There is the, uh, I think sixteen and seventeen, the conflict resolution. Getting confused on cases. There's, uh, notice requirements for the contact person and the resolution of complaints. Um, again, it would have to vary from case-by-case basis. With regards to fencing, as far as I know, there is no specific condition that says that fencing is to be provided in any particular area or continuous around the lake. That's more of an operational aspect of the provisions of trespass. Trespass is at least addressed in the conditions and they would have to address trespassing, but fencing per se is not addressed in the CUP conditions. Uh, so, I mean, there is provisions that talk about how they're supposed to address trespassing and conflicts, uh, either conflicts with agricultural, conflicts with the harassment of cattle, uh, you know, those types of things, um, can be part and parcel to the CUP. But the erection of fencing is not addressed in the conditions.
Thank you.
If I can add one point, um, the ranger here mentioned about a, maybe it was one of his, one of his calls. There was one time, um, Mr. King was confronted with some people going into his yard. They were asked to leave and he was harassed and, um, hard enough where he actually had to call the lake. Um, uh, very upset or he personally would have done something. Um, so that's how harsh the, uh, the camp people can get to the family and to the property. Sometimes I've had into run-ins, but, so we, we will and have today, we will have more problems if the lake is expanded.
Uh, what does the ranch do? Is it, is it cattle?
Cattle ranch.
Okay, um-
Used to be at List, by the way.
Pardon?
Used to be at the List Ranch, by the way.
Well, there's a, a policy in here about, uh, that all discretionary development shall be reviewed to ensure that impacts on agriculture are minimized. Uh, does this, uh, do these trespassers, uh, impact, uh, your ranching, um, operations?
Well, the cattle and the, and the horses are on our property right now. And they have spotted, uh, throwing rocks and chasing them around.
Okay, so that just doesn't, it, it seems that there's a policy here that we have that we need to, um, see what we can do to make sure that that policy is enforced. Is there, um, relating to that policy, is there something that we can, um, impose?
Is that a question for county council? You're looking right at me, so I'm, I'm assuming that that is the case. I'm looking at Condition thirty-nine, Agricultural Recreation Conflict Management Plan. I'm looking at subdivision A and it says there that the ARCMP, which is the Agricultural Recreation Conflict Management Plan, shall include the following items if determined necessary by the planning director. So that there is a discretionary aspect to this condition and it's a planning director decision to determine whether or not fencing buffers and/or other features adequate to separate the two uses. I guess the two uses in, in this case being cattle and the recreational uses at United Water Conservation District's Lake Piru Recreation Area.
So what, what page are you, what page are you reading from?
Page one sixty-two.
One sixty-two, thank you.
That is the conditions of approval for, um, for this matter. Uh, it, it's, it's as, um, Mr. Richards indicated, a ad hoc case-by-case basis and it would have to be determined upon all of this evidence before the planning director for, um, him or her to, um, implement that fencing requirement there.
Well, we have, we have testimony that, that, um, the, the users of the campground harass this, uh, horses and, and cattle and such. And, um, just, uh, my, my own experience with using the area and, um, being not as familiar as, as you are with the area, I know that, uh, that it gets, uh, kids wander and they're, uh, unsupervised. So it seems to me that it would be a very good idea to see, to look further into, uh, providing adequate fencing because, uh, clearly what's there now is not adequate to, uh, protect his, uh, his cattle ranching, which is a, a violation of the stated policy. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the last of my speaker cards rebuttal by the applicant? I have some questions, so if, I, I mean, I'll just put this on the table. When we heard this in two thousand, we heard exactly the same issues and I have a couple of concerns. First concern is, I don't like having an applicant that's a public agency come up and tell me that an existing relationship, we don't know anything about. The King, this, this has been from day one. And yeah, I live in Bardstown, but, uh, that concerns me. Second thing is, I know there's been a change in, uh, with retirement and all that kind of stuff. You guys are asking for thirty years and you're asking for an enhancement for an ancillary use to your prime directive, which is water conservation. So I don't have a warm fuzzy feeling about what I'm hearing right now and I guess I'd like to hear how you're gonna fix it because none of this is new information. That's part one. Part two is, the relationship between the lost Padres, well, this is rough, rough territory. And we're talking about doing, um, a kind of recreational use up there, which is gonna get folks who can get in trouble really fast. For example, a man who drowned recently. Couldn't swim, went in the water. Not your responsibility, but that's the kind of folks who we're catering to. And it was a major event to find that guy's body and traumatic to his family and all that stuff. Not your responsibility. There is personal responsibility here. The problem is, is that you as a public agency have now a conflict, which we've all acknowledged, in relationship to another public agency. And the reason the last one didn't work, and Commissioner Western, you hit it on the head, is your business plan didn't make sense and you're trying to finance this by enhancing, pulling in people who can pay more to create cash flow. That's all fine. The master plan I have in front of me is thirty years with a case-by-case basis. I know how we grind here at the county. The kinds of interactions that we're talking about occur, they happen over a day. It's gonna take us six months just to determine whether there was an infraction. So those are the pieces. How are we gonna fix it? That's my question. And I'm supportive. That's why I'm a little upset here.
I guess I, I will try to address it. Um, how to fix it? We, we are committed and we totally sympathize with the fact that having a recreational facility up there impacts the people who live up there. We understand that and we sympathize for, for the, for the issues that come up, um, which is why when we are told about them, we go and, and we'll, we'll try to address it with them. We try to work on a person-to-person, human-to-human basis. Um, although we've addressed many of the issues, every time something new happens, the old grievances all come back and all come before us and we thought we had addressed them. Um, we are committed to stepping in whenever we are called and somebody says, "There's a trespasser." Our super, our rangers are gonna go and try to help with that. We, I don't know how to fix it. If you have suggestions, I'd love to hear them.
And Dana, and I don't want to put you on the hot seat. You're, you're retiring. So I'd like to hear from the new management.
Oh, okay.
Mike Solomon, I'm the general manager now at United Water Conservation District. You'll have to excuse me, I'm in the middle of a good head cold, so I'm gonna start acting. First of all, as you mentioned, Chairman, uh, you've heard those concerns and Dana just mentioned, it's the same concern that happened a long time ago that just keeps coming up. We don't hear these reoccurring issues. This, the problem with the harassment stuff, that happened seven years ago. We don't see that kind of stuff. Get it, you get those reports daily. We, we don't get those kind of things. When we get the problems from the Kings, Mr. Matthews, we want to work with our neighbors. We're very supportive of our neighbors. We try to resolve it, but again, they keep bringing up something that happened eight years ago. It's over. We can't fix that. All we can deal with is the current issues and we're not getting those daily concerns. Uh, as far as the, uh, you know, the lane through the, uh, through the kiosk area, we try to provide that. All we try to do is slow them down. Sometime they go racing through. That was our biggest concern is the speed. We were afraid of people getting hurt. It's, doesn't mean you can go unlimited speed when you go through these things. The way we fix it is, they come to us, they say, "We got a problem." We look at, Clayton's a very talented young man. We've got good people up there. We have a very, very strong, um, concessionaire up there who is committed to making this proj- project work and, uh, making this area a nice, safe place. Uh, we will address them as they come up, but I can't address something that happened eight years ago. It's, it's over, it's done and that, but it keeps resurrecting itself. As far as, yes, water is our main responsibility, water conservation. Um, what we're trying to do is create an environment, number one, for a clientele that can, the clientele nowadays for RV and parking are the ones that have the big pop-outs. And right now, they all have to go up to the Sierra Nevadas or far away. We want to offer an opportunity here where they can utilize this great resource we have, utilize it. It does cost more because you gotta pay for those facilities. That wastewater plant, you're probably looking at one point eight million dollars just to put that in. It has to cost more because we gotta pay for it. We're gonna bring a concessionaire in. We want the thirty years because we, as a water district, we don't want our water rates paying for these things. But we need to be able to offer somebody a long-term lease who will come in and pay and build those things and be able to capitalize their costs. Getting back to those problems, I'm committed as the general manager. I know Mr. Matthews, I know Mr. King. I'm glad to sit down and work out problems with them if there's something we need to do. Uh, but even if we put a fence up, kids are gonna climb over them and if we get calls, we'll respond. We, our Clayton's folks will get out there, the concessionaire folks will, we're not irresponsible, uh, uh, neighbors. We'll be responsive to their needs. Uh, but again, I'm not gonna keep reliving an eight-year-old event. I can't.
Go ahead.
Okay, whoa, 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 wait, wait. I know you maybe have thought of this when we talked about signs, but I don't know if you hand people a flyer when they come in about the trespassing issue or if you put a sign up on a fence and you simply say, "You trespass, you're gonna be expelled right from the area." And if the ranger finds anyone who's trespassing, no questions asked. Get in your car, get out. And I think that may help.
That, that's a great suggestion. We can look at doing things. We do, we do it already, okay? That tells you how new I am.
Commissioner Duca?
Regarding the fence, uh, it's, uh, what kind of fence is it right now?
The fence that they're referring to is, uh, the landowner's property is on one side of the roadway and our property's on the other side of the roadway. To kind of deter people from wandering off our property, we've put up a chain link fence that is across the street from their property to kind of set a boundary for our users that, you know, this is our property, this is where you're allowed to be, everything on this side. Every person that comes to the gate is given a map of the park and it outlines what our, our use area is.
How hi- how high is that fence?
Four and a half feet.
Okay, and, uh, the size, just a moment, just a moment, please. Let me follow through with this. Um, I'm easily knocked off my train of thought as many can attest to. How, uh, what, what size are, are the links in the chain link?
He's the one that put the fence up. I'll let him answer that question.
And just, Dan, we've heard your testimony and so you've said your piece. Let us now talk with the district, okay? Thank you.
Back in two thousand and five, when we had some very extensive damage and cleanup from the floods, um, we lost, uh, fencing material around that area. And the part that's directly across, uh, from the, from the, uh, King Ranch, uh, there's a bridge. And we put up some standard chain link fencing, uh, on our side, on, within our property to keep people, to keep them from wandering over to, uh, the other side of the road where, uh, the King property is. And I personally, uh, spent time, Dan, with Wally King on doing the And I personally spent time, Dan, with Wally King on doing those repairs and telling what we were going to do. And at the time, he was, he was happy with what we were doing. We put up additional fencing to, not to keep people on, not, the fence is not on his property line, but actually on the other side of the road, so to actually keep them from going on the road over to the property. We also have a hanging fence underneath that bridge to, one, keep our people from wandering over to his property and to keep his cattle and livestock from wandering onto our property.
The chain link fence, what are the square sides? The standard?
It's a standard chain link fence.
Is there another kind of fencing that's a little more difficult to climb? Is there a possibility of it going higher? And is there something at the base of it, you know, because I know kids just keep on kicking at it until they can get under it?
The only alternative I would suggest is that we would have to run along the frontage of his property line and extend a chain link fence several hundred feet until we get around the corner, past his gate.
And, but the standard, okay, four and a half feet, I have two sons, that's a challenge. That's not a fence. And then, the ease with which you can go over the standard chain link, you know, because you can get a tow hold, and also the ease with which you can kick it in, lift it up, and get through, is, do you find that still a problem? It used to be.
If they're really intent on crossing the fence, we could put three-strand barbed wire at the top, and they'll still go over it.
Right. I suggested the moat. You have the water.
Sharks are hard, probably become endangered.
Alligators.
But when we did our flood repairs in 2005, I was out there with Wally King, and we talked at great length of what we could do when we're making our repairs to minimize some of the impact on their property.
Okay, thank you.
With the extension of putting in several hundred more feet of fence. But our parking lot on that side, that rustic picnic area that Dan had the complaint about earlier, is already fenced off?
The rustic picnic?
Yeah, it's, we already have an existing five-foot chain link fence on, to keep people in the parking lot at that point, too, so. I, like I said, putting in several hundred more feet of fencing, I'm not sure what else to do.
And again, as the new general manager, I've been around, I was the chief financial officer for 11 years with the district. I didn't get up to the lake as much. I know the Kings, I know Mr. Matthews. I'm willing to work with them, reasonable stuff. But again, you put up an eight-foot fence, it's a, boy, I'll be over that eight-foot fence. That's no more of a challenge than, hey, I'm a boy, I want to get over that thing. I want to get to the other side. You know, we can only do our best to try to prevent it, short of putting razor wire, which we're not going to do. We're not going to put up anything that endangers a young child. Hopefully, you know, the clientele we get with the new RVs and stuff, too, that changes it, the atmosphere, too. As we get more people in there, the concessionaire will have more security-type people, they're not, they're sort of, not peace officers, but they're more guards, they're more active around there. So, we, I believe we can work out the problems, and if we get them addressed to us when they're occurring, we'll go after them and see what we can do. That's my commitment.
Other questions? Commissioner Westerner?
Mr. Chair, I'd like somebody to address, because I'm going to ask staff about this, the difference between a group and an event. How do you perceive it? How do you see handling it? We have an enhanced facility. The Rotary Club of Fillmore wants to hold a fishing derby to raise funds for a noble cause. Now we have 250 people. So, I just want to hear what your thoughts are on that, because I heard the only way to describe groups. But at the same time, I know staff like Atira Rohada. Again, we have a facility that's recreational. We've put limitations on size and scope of events, weddings, things like that. I looked at the permitted uses, it's kind of vague. So, what we're relying on here is a self-regulation issue. So I just have a concern, all of a sudden it goes from, you know, men's breakfast from the Presbyterian Church goes up there for one morning for Bible study, 20, 30 guys, to the Fillmore Rotary having 250 people for a very noble cause, don't get me wrong. But it does bring along other issues. And again, I don't see the conditions kind of, having staff, the director, the ability to deal with that and to guide the management. So, anybody care to comment on that, or you just want me to create a new condition to control it for you? Pat's laughing over there.
The commission is always free to...
Yes, I know. But you know what happens if I start making rules?
I was checking in with Clayton, our supervising ranger, as to what his experience has been with groups or events. And he says, basically, in the two and a half years he's been there, it's been group use, which they consider about 50 people or less, that there hasn't been a larger event. There have been, I know in the past, one time I was visiting the lake, there was, I think, Electricians Union, and they were having a picnic, a barbecue. And they appeared to have more than 50 people. The number of people that would be allowed in at any one time would never breach that overall 1,468 limit. So whether they're part of an organized event or they're all individuals, they're still within that cap. At this point, I don't know if planning has a, or the zone code has a definition between group and event, but in our mind, it's that groups are considered 50 or less. You know, church groups comes in and camps overnight and has a sing fest or something. And then, a larger rotary-type event would be a day-use event, that, once again, they would probably make a scheduled reservation so that they knew they had the day-use area. And they, their numbers of people that came in would be counted under that overall cap.
So you'd be looking at the overall cap to the control as far as the regulation, I think. Okay. Again, because what I'm thinking is, if this moves forward and the facilities are improved, even though it's capped, is there's going to be encouragement, that kind of thing. And again, I'm not opposing to it, I'm just trying to make sure we give staff and you enough direction that you can, when you come up on your 10- and 20-year reviews, that you have the resources by which to manage this. Okay? Rather than having to come back and get this or that, or a problem is created. So, just trying to do a little forward-thinking here. So, all right, that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
It would be the Imogen Vest Fishing Derby, I think, would be fit your thing. Commissioner Rodriguez?
Just one comment, or a question, I suppose, an extension to my fellow commissioners' comment about groups versus et cetera. And you mentioned 50. Is that part of your documented procedures or policies? Or is it just something that...
It's just been a standard.
So that, so that then that is based on interpretation, whoever has to make that decision?
Right. One thing we can do is that there is a concessionaire that United has contracted with, and we can make specifications with them regarding numbers. And so there's...
Specification does eliminate the ambiguity in the decision process that makes for any good management process, and particularly if it's defensible, or it needs to be defended, you have a benchmark, as opposed to the interpretation, whoever the staff member happens to be that day has to make that decision.
Right, right.
Which is not defensible. That's the only thing I was going to say about that.
Yes, go ahead. Commissioner Dukas.
Again, how would you respond to the request from Forest Watch regarding a reduction for hikers that don't intend to use the facilities?
Mike Solomon, again, just a couple of things. We've been trying to work with the federal government. They want to do a land exchange with us. We, the Forest Service has asked to do a land exchange to take over that trailhead so, to resolve that problem. We have worked on that for eight years now, six years? And every time we get it through, partway through Congress or Senate, it gets killed, we're trying to do it through the administrative side. As far as the trailhead, there's no way for us to track, when somebody comes in, they could say they're going to use the trailhead, and then they get the full use of the facility. And that's the key thing. When they come in, they may only be going there, but they can go to the snack bar, they can go swimming, they can do whatever they want. So there's really not much control there at this point. Yeah, sorry.
So, is Forest Watch aware of this land swap deal that may happen in our lifetime?
Oh, they are. Yes, I'm sure they are, because we've got several environmental groups that commented on it.
Okay, then, thank you.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes, before you sit down, I have one question, and relates to, I guess, the issue of the noise. How do you deal with PA systems and amplifiers as it relates to daily activity or events? Because noises and issues have been raised.
For me personally, I've never actually had to deal with PA systems or anything like that, because we've never had a large, organized event. We do have an ordinance that's, basically describes that if it exceeds the boundaries of the area the person has paid to use, then they're in violation of a district ordinance, and they can be cited. Typically, what I personally try to do and get my staff to do is, if you can hear it from 100 feet away, we're going to ask them to turn it down. We have had, like, four or five camp groups come in, and they'll have like a small karaoke machine with the one little speaker, kind of thing like that, which is, you know, if it gets too loud to where we can hear it more than 50, 100 feet, we'll ask them to turn it down. And we also have quiet hours at 10:00 PM at night. Anything after that, there's no noise allowed other than speaking. No radios are allowed, no PA systems, anything of that sort.
So, a lot of these problems could be mitigated by proactive enforcement by your staff? Okay, thank you. Before you go away to follow up on that, what about personal watercraft? They're not the quietest thing in the world.
Right now, we have a 12-foot size limit on personal watercraft, that anything under 12 feet is not allowed on the lake. There's currently only two models manufactured, so we average about five water, personal watercraft a year that actually are allowed to get on the lake because of the size limit.
Okay. And that's a policy within your organization?
Yes. It's a United Water policy.
Those are documented policies? That we could get a copy of for anybody?
Yeah, the personal watercraft size limit, yes.
All those issues we're talking about?
Yes.
Anything else from the district? Follow-up from staff? Terry?
I did have the question as far as sewage treatment plant guidelines of orderly development, and no discussion. And again, not that I'm opposing it, I just want to make sure the record's straight, t's across, i's are dotted here, why there was no discussion regarding guidelines for orderly development.
The simple answer is that it's not applicable. The guidelines for orderly development are associated with the development of those type of facilities in relationship to what the county refers to as urban areas. This is not an urban area. And also cities in the relationship to areas that can be potentially annexed by the city. So with regards to the general plan, again, this facility is not a community treatment plan, it only serves this particular facility, and is, does not extend outward to provide any other sewage processing or treatment processing for an area beyond this particular conditionally used permit. An example would be, the Thomas Aquinas College has a similar package treatment plan.
Okay, so if somebody in the unincorporated area wanted to put in farmer housing and wanted to access the sewage treatment plant, the county would tell them no?
The county and LAFCO and probably several other groups and organizations, yes.
Okay. Then just one other suggestion, if I may. With this, these hikers and the Forest Watch and all that, my suggestion might be, if they're an organized group, they might be able to buy a little discounted pass or something like that, that then the rangers and stuff would know that's those type of individuals. Just a thought process for a little marketing for you.
What are the limits of our jurisdiction with regard to this, the aesthetics of the water tank? We've got, the question again is about that mitigated negative declaration, and that the request that we remove it from conditions. Are we limited to location and construction only, or can we talk about the aesthetics? Trees, paint?
Your question goes to the citation in the letter from United Water Conservation District to 53091 of the government code that basically says, I'm quoting from it now, "Zoning ordinances of a county shall not apply to the location or construction of facilities for the production, generation, storage, treatment, or transmission of water." And that's the basis for their withdrawal of that aspect of the CUP. So, if aesthetics is a part of the county zoning ordinance, if there is a zoning ordinance provision in the non-coastal zoning ordinance dealing with aesthetic aspects, then that zoning ordinance that deals with aesthetics could not be applied to the construction or the location of that water tank. If aesthetics is only a SEQA-related issue, and based on the MND that I've seen, that is the only basis for an aesthetic mitigation measure, then the SEQA document, which is prepared by the lead agency, is the primary responsibility of the lead agency, and is only enforceable through the mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program. I think the question that you really are getting at is, how does that condition or that mitigation measure play out? And there are provisions within SEQA that a mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program is done on an annual basis or through some reporting mechanism so that the agency who's responsible for it knows what's going on, and then that project, then that report becomes a public document so that everyone knows what progress is done towards the completion of that mitigation measure. So as far as the responsible agency is concerned, if the county had an aesthetic element within its non-coastal zoning ordinance, then potentially it would be precluded by 53091. If it is a SEQA-related mitigation measure, which I believe it is, then it's up to the responsibility of the lead agency through this mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program to enforce it. If the county is delegated responsibility to follow up on aesthetics, then it would be the responsible agency, the county, to fulfill the requirements of that mitigation measure. Not having that mitigation measure right in front of me, I don't know what it says about who's primarily responsible for aesthetic control of that water tank. So that's kind of where things lie.
So the scenic resource protection overlay zone that talks about, you know, that you regulate uses that may adversely affect these resources, you know, that you want it planted and painted appropriately, that wouldn't apply to the water tank, then?
Are you referring to a mitigation measure or to the coastal, a non-coastal zoning ordinance?
I'm referring to page 112 of our staff report, 19 of 20, that just, it's talking about zoning consistency, and then it says scenic resource protection overlay zone. So that wouldn't apply to the water tank, then?
Again, that scenic overlay zone is a part of our coastal, non-coastal zoning ordinance, and again, pursuant to that code section, we would be preempted from applying, applying that aspect of our zoning ordinance onto the construction or the location of a site, since construction and location go towards how it looks. Again, aesthetics is an area that SEQA is concerned about, and SEQA, through the mitigation monitoring plan and the mitigation measure, would apply there. Again, who's responsible for that aesthetic mitigation measure? I don't have that with me right now.
Okay, then, thank you.
If I may, Mr. Chair, follow up on that. Then my understanding would be that as an interested agency, the county then could comment on that SEQA document, requesting the aesthetics be applied, and then we could reference our overlay and those types of things. So, well, my understanding is that we would have to be an agency commenting on that document, and we give our input, is that correct, Pat?
That's correct, but only during the period of time in which the document was open for public review, which has come and gone.
Come and gone. So then I guess we could look at a good neighbor policy, and United would like to see us as a good neighbor.
And of course, if I may interject, Terry Newman, relative to page 327 and the reporting program references under 5.1 aesthetics, as Mr. Quong referenced, the first item. reporting program references under 5.1 aesthetics, as Mr. Quong referenced, the first item indicates that the United Water is required to perform the action. It'll occur prior to construction of the facility, wherever that might be, and it'll happen once. Beyond that, I think it's, it no longer becomes an issue of...
No, I think that's what we got to. We're down to the good neighbor policy as far as working. Thank you.
If I could pose the question on page 133, back to this 30-year period for the CUP, the way this thing is written, there's a lot of may's and ifs as opposed to shall's and we're not the lead agency, so I will admit my comfort level with a 30-year CUP is real thin because this, this will take a major amount of money by a complaint to trigger a major review. And I guess, is there language or can county council suggest someone will have to be majorly upset and continue that upsetness for a long period of time to cause this kind of review to occur with our current county bureaucracy? And I, it's not a strike, it's just we're talking about public agencies bumping up against each other, so.
Which condition are you referring to?
Page 133, the permit expiration renewal modification, condition three. And I really, I guess I, I'm one vote here, but, but I would really like to see this thing structured in a way that will work so that we get to the good neighbor policy. There has been some harm. It may be eight years old, but we're talking about people who were there in 1904. So eight years relative to that time period is a minor thing. And also, the dam was built in 58, the certification issues, you all are exposed to public process all the time. So it may be a thorn in your side, but figuring out how to have this permit be a good neighbor thing would help because I get to hear the other side, so.
Just to answer your question, I'm looking at permit expiration renewal and modification on page 133 of the staff report or page nine of 60 of the conditions for approval, subdivision B. As close to November 30th, 2018 and November 30th, 2028, as practical, the planning director shall conduct a compliance review. I think it would be within your purview as a planning commission if, if a motion was made properly and seconded and again carried, to possibly restructure that time period for these compliance reviews. And it would also be within your purview to bring that compliance review before your board if you so chose to do, as opposed to simply having a planning director review of it. If your concern is one of more close observation of this going on, given the length of time for this land use permit, 30 years, you could obviously do it on a, you know, for your basis or whatever basis you feel would suit your needs of making certain that compliance of all of these issues are taken care of so it doesn't come back to you, quote unquote, as old news or things that, you know, continually come back to you. So that'd be my only suggestion at this point, but I, again, would defer to the planning director and his and her staff to, you know, think about ways how this could be done to accommodate your desires.
Pat?
Other than the time limits on the more frequent reviews, I mean, that'd be one way to, to address it. The other is to limit the initial time period. So I mean, those opportunities are available to you in any manner in which you feel it's appropriate.
I guess my question to the district is, is the concessionaire now under contract for 30 years or is it a 15-year, 15-year? How did, how did you all structure that?
The current concessionaire we have is a short-term concessionaire. He just, they just started this January. They have up to a five-year agreement. We can pull them out before that, whatever. Excuse me, the idea was to get this CUP completed during that period so that we can put an RFP out to see what, what kind of a project within the scope of the CUP people can develop up to the CUP standard. Because there's a lot of people, we may do what we're doing now up to a full-blown project, as you said, but it really depends on the length of 30 years. When we were first going out and looking at this, we couldn't get anybody to do less than 40 years because it's a lot, you're, a full build-out, you're probably looking 15 to 20 million dollars. And with recreation being, you know, a luxury, now, my wife's a recreation person, it's not a luxury, it's a requirement, but for most people, it's a, a luxury, so the revenues aren't there in rough times and stuff, so they need some assurance that it's out there. I, I would just also point out, you know, there is a 10-year check-in each time. United Water Conservation District, we've been around since 1927, different names, but we're, we're run by a seven-member board that represents different areas of the county. We are good neighbors, we're good representatives of the environment, we're good representatives of the county. Our, our board is not going to let us do things that ticks other people off. They, they keep the staff in line and we will put that in any agreement we work out with a concessionaire that builds us. And we have it in our five-year one right now that they can't do anything up there different than what we said unless they come to us and we get, our board approves it. So hopefully that helps out. We are good neighbors and we're committed to this county and protecting the county.
So just in terms of logistics, the reality is you will be developing an RFP for the next four years and the use inauguration relative to the master plan, unless there's a big turnaround in your current use, isn't going to kick off for five years or four years.
It could kick off sooner. One of the things we waited on the RFP is we have this new concessionaire up there who is an expert at this kind of stuff. He's actually going to be meeting with our board next week and start briefing us on what he saw in his operations this summer to say, when you develop the scope of work in the RFP and with the CUP, here's what'll, here's what'll work and here's what won't work. We, we aren't experts at that, so we didn't know how to develop the RFP that made sense. And he's going to help us and we hope to get that kicked off within a year or so. Get the RFP out on the street.
I think you've addressed the point I was going to raise. I guess the only, the only other thing I would say is beside the 10-year check-in, there also is your condition number 15, which is your resolution of complaints. And that's something that is a daily, monthly process that can go on that doesn't have to wait for a 10-year check-in.
Call me cynical, but we're talking about public agencies here. And again, we, we need to talk about what we are, what we aren't, not what we aren't. And United Water's mandate is huge and this is one little piece of it, so, you know, my concern is we're talking like this is the prime directive of the agency and it's not. And that is the concern because if it's profitable, it's helpful. If it's a thorn, it's just going to sit there until it can, you know, because that's how this discussion happened in 2000. This is, none of this is new information from my, from my perspective. Okay. Well, is there anything else? I probably am sort of...
Is there a willingness to, to have review maybe shorter periods of time for initial review and speed that up and have it come to the, the commission?
Nor if I could just, a backdrop on that, for staff, when you say a compliance review, what, what does the scope, size and scale look like? Because I want to piggyback on what you're saying, maybe just something of a monitoring rather than a full-blown, but I don't know what the staff's thing deems as a compliance review.
Compliance review is onsite to review the subject property. It's a inclusion of a, a review of all of the conditions that are associated with it and all related documents such as mitigation monitoring programs or hydrology studies or drainage studies or any of that nature. Everything that's a component part of the land use entitlement permit is comprehensively reviewed and also if it's needed to, subsequent reviews by related departments and agencies, if they have responsibilities in those particular areas such as environmental health or fire department or something of that nature. So it is a comprehensive, as the name implies, a comprehensive review, hopefully from A to Z as part of the determination of whether or not all the conditions are being adhered to.
Okay, so just, just as an analogy, that's a full-blown physical, CAT scans, the whole nine yards as opposed to just coming in, get your blood pressure or temperature checked.
That's correct.
So what I'm thinking of as far as how to monitor this, say, in the first five years, you know, we don't want to do a full-blown physical, but maybe give staff an opportunity to touch base, monitor. Does that kind of give you a little direction?
Yeah, what I was going to suggest is that it seems that until some major project goes forward or some changes really occur there, if, if nothing really changes in the next four years to come in for a full-blown four-year hearing before, the planning commission may not be appropriate. It may be more appropriate to just have a staff review. I think we all need to have, let some of these enhancements be done and settle in and see how well they're working. And maybe at that point, there would be a compliance, a larger-scale compliance, the CAT scan review.
Trust me, I had a whole other comment, I was going to make a, have to spend my 60th physical.
I'm, I'm thinking of the fence and the areas that, that we already know that there's problems and, and I anticipate that that would happen sooner than five years, that extension of that fence and working with the adjacent property owners.
Yeah, I think that's something that it sounds like is going to be, we're going to be talking about that now and I'm not sure that's something that...
And then we'd like to look at it and see that it's been followed through and that there isn't just this continuing nuisance.
Is that something that you can direct your staff to follow up with rather than having the whole commission come and hold a hearing on it?
We're going to try and work this out.
So, Pat, let's craft a little language there for item B to get where, this is on page 133, so we, would you, would you all like a sidebar for, say, five minutes to think about that and put your heads together and give the commission a bit of language, please?
I also have a question.
Yeah?
A lot of us are parked in the three-hour parking lot.
You better move, you need to go move your car.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we all speak from experience. Let's take a 15-minute break. Everyone get their cars moved.
We got a ticket, so, yeah. We're just trying to figure out.
They told us how, we'd go downstairs and I see what I see.
Yeah.
Go down, take care of it.
Ready? All right, let's come back to session. Pat?
All right, thank you very much. The following language is recommended to be added to the bottom of condition 3B. It would begin with, on or about November 1st, 2013, the United Water Conservation District shall provide a written report regarding compliance with condition 39 or other additional language, the subject matters that the commission would want to include for transmission. This would be a report to the planning director, written report, and then transmission to the planning commission for receipt and file.
If we could have action or a receipt or a file, I...
Well, if county council can correct me, but if it's brought to us, then it's under our guns, I mean, I'm sorry, our scope, bad metaphor, then we can order further.
That is correct and that's the purpose of that language so that you would have an opportunity to review it, read it, and then determine based upon your review of it to schedule some sort of follow-up hearing or to request it be placed properly on the agenda for further discussion. And that's really more of a Brown Act issue so that it's properly placed before you for discussion.
But what it does is allows us to reach out and use our investigative powers if we don't like what we hear.
And, and would it be, would it, would it be limited then to just 39 or could it, could it be expanded to, oh gosh?
It could be expanded. I'm suggesting 39 at, at a minimum. There may be other areas such as you'd want to report regarding calls for service from the sheriff's department or calls for service to the fire protection district because of other emergencies there. Anything that you would feel would be appropriate, that you would be of interest at that five-year time period.
Pat, how does that sound to the applicant that we include the, the calls for service report and fire and this agricultural management plan?
I'm relying on your expertise as far as the...
From where I sit, I, I think it's important not only for us as a commission, but I think the district as well to have some awareness of what the activities are as it relates to their operation or their ancillary, ancillary services they provide into public. The sheriff's department has the ability to provide a printout of calls for service for any given geographical area that it is responsible for. Lake Piru and surrounding areas are all broken down into reporting districts. I think it's not a difficult, well, I know it's not a difficult matter at all to contact the station commander and, and, and make arrangements to do that or get a response back. And I'm, I'm talking directly to planning, get a response back on calls for service for that particular area. It, it's something that, that I think the director might benefit from particularly as relates to trying to resolve and deal with issues from a complaint perspective of the neighbors. I've heard, and again, I've been around a long time, believe me, I mean, I did my 34, 35 years and I, I know well where Lake Piru is at. But I was also responsible for the services, all services provided on the west side of the county and so I know a lot of what goes, gone, has gone on out there. And I appreciate the fact that your, that your enforcement staff, your head ranger is interacting positively with the station, the station commander out of Fillmore and has a good working relationship. I would encourage that and frankly, I would support any efforts that he might, you might choose to, to follow up on, to enhance that relationship. Tell me what you need and I'll make the phone call. It, it's, it's important to, to know what those factors are. It helps us make a better decision here. It also helps you to diffuse some of the issues that may not be pertinent. I'd also however, like to see, have planning get some sort of workload indicator from the district specifically as it relates to your enforcement efforts or your ranger issues. You must have workload indicators, annual reports, something that you provide and you, and you provide to your, just to your board as to the activities of, of the district. I think it might be beneficial for our historical information to have, have a copy that similarly forwarded to, to planning if it's appropriate, if it's available.
We, the rangers actually do a monthly report on those kind of things.
And I'm not, I'm not talking about monthly, you know?
And, and it's part of our board package every month. You certainly go on our website and hold the ranger's report, it's provided. We're fine with five-year reporting. I mean, we, as I mentioned earlier, our seven board members are strong members of this community, they want to do what's right. They, they will make sure we do what's right. If this is what makes the planning commission feel comfortable that we're going to be good stewards, we're glad to do it.
Right. Thank you.
The other, the other issue was specific language about size of groups.
Yeah, I was going to comment on that. I was revisiting condition 2C and it states, "The permitee shall not undertake any construction or uses not explicitly described in these conditions without first contacting the planning to..." or uses not explicitly described in these conditions without first contacting the planning director." So I feel comfortable in the sense that staff has the ability to deal with that because they are not permitted to have major events. My comfort level is, there is, nothing says you cannot, but as I read 2C, I see it says the uses are not explicitly described in here. But what I would encourage, because I know it's going to happen, been involved with charity organizations for 30 years, people like me are going to approach you and I'm going to be very convincing and I don't want you to get in trouble with us, okay? So I just want to point that out. I feel comfortable now that I have read it. You can point to this and say, no, I got to go to him first, okay? And then I'll pick up the phone, talk to Pat and use my undue influence. Strike that last break. So I feel comfortable having revisited that condition. Thank you.
So we're not going to add a numerical value to that?
I would say, because they're not explicitly permitted to let any group. But again, I'm just one person. If you feel you want a different comfort level, because again, we get, you know, we're just going to pick a number out of the air kind of thing.
Chair, Chair Bartels, just one other issue we'd like to bring to your attention, and this is following up on Commissioner Duke's concern about aesthetics. I finally found the mitigation monitoring and reporting program that's found on pages 325 and following in your staff report dated 1999. Pages 327 and the top of 328 deal with the aesthetics. It might also be, if it's the pleasure of the commission to add a report about this aspect of the MMRP as part of that five-year annual report, or the five-year report that Pat was referring to in condition 3.
I actually heard Pat explicitly say that there would be a progress report on the mitigation monitoring plan.
On all of it or just one portion of it?
Well, I would assume if we're having a mitigation monitoring, certainly where it says once.
Yeah.
I mean, it's either done or it's not done. The other issue for me is just to update, yeah, Pat, did you, did you get that? So that, okay. And the other issue would be that because in that period, we're talking about you going out to RFP and ultimately it sounds like fast-tracking that RFP and having a concessionaire who is either committed or not committed to the long term, that that be a piece of the report so that we know who we're, who we're talking to here, so that it's not, the district is here to report, but then there is the actual concessionaire on the ground who is going to say, this is where we are, this is what our, this is our business plan. Because you've been very straight, this is about not having this be a fiscal drain on the district, that it is an enhancement and it pays for itself.
I'm sorry to go backwards, but did we ever discuss the no parking signs and who put them there and why they're there? It was, it was a concern of the hiker representative.
I can attest to who put the signs there, but that is, that section of roadway is a county roadway. That's sections maintained by county roads.
Okay, so I'm assuming there's a legitimate safety reason for having no parking signs?
Well, it's kind of a windy section, so the only thing I can say is that if you would make a safety hazard...
Nothing personal against the hikers.
No, no, yeah, no, no.
Okay, very good, thank you.
One last comment to our district staff. I still got a concern about the application issues and PA issues. I would, I would expect or I would hope that you have something defined within your policy, the protocols or enforcement efforts, so that it isn't a matter of interpretation, left solely to interpretation of whoever's out there to say, oh, it's too loud, or it's not loud enough. Define the area. Or, you know, the, I'm trying to remember, think of what the, what the noise measurement unit is.
Decibel.
Yeah, decibel meter or something.
Yeah, our current ordinance doesn't talk about decimals or anything. It's more just the times that Clayton mentioned earlier and just the distance, the judgment of it's over, what, 50 yards? 50 feet or something like that. Really, again, what we're all about in United is if it's obnoxious noise, our rangers are going to go in and take care of it. If somebody's just enjoying some country music and it's mellow, if the neighbor comes over and complains and says it's a lot, we'll turn it down. It doesn't have to be country, I just think country.
Am I concerned, am I concerned?
If it's, you know, rap, it's, you know, shaking the building, we're going to stop that. We're, we're trying to make it a pleasurable recreational opportunity for folks and we're not going to let one group drive everybody else out.
Well, my concern is, and granted, I give you that, my concern is the fact that sound carries tremendously at night, well beyond, you know, wherever somebody might be standing to determine whether it's too loud or not, and it impacts this surrounding area beyond the limits of the, of the immediate recreational area. That's my concern, because there's been a complaint that's been voiced here today.
And that's why we shut it down at 10 o'clock so that there's no, it's similar to residential areas. Basically, if anything after 10 o'clock, you're loud and obnoxious, your neighbors can call and shut it down. But even, again, before 10 o'clock, if we've got somebody at 8 o'clock that's just booming things and, you know, it's shaking the, of the canyons, we're going to stop it. We're not going to let that go on. We're reasonable.
Thank you.
And if you are interested in having a decibel level, it's not a problem. We can easily get a decibel meter and implement that.
Is there anything else to come before the August body? Closing comments by anybody? Close the public hearing? We haven't had any deliberation at all here, but...
But it's been in the public forum, so that's all that matters.
What's the pleasure of the commission?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the recommended actions 1 through 5 on pages 121 and 122 of our staff report with the additional language for item 3B as proposed by staff, particularly that there be a five-year review in writing and that being brought back to the planning commission.
With the acceptance of the extra exhibits and the striking of the water tank language...
So moved.
And the other exhibits before us?
All the records that have been presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second, discussion?
Just real quickly, we've gone over some fine-tuned points. Two of us were up here before the last time and there's some concerns, and I refer to the good neighbor policy, which does not exist, just for the record. However, I think everybody here has the intent, but unfortunately, sometimes we have to put teeth in things so staff is able to enforce. But at this point, I'm trusting to the good neighbor policy highly and, but however, the teeth are in place for staff to bring it back to us if the good neighbor policy doesn't work.
Other comments?
I'd just like to say congratulations.
And just for your information, if the commission is all right, I'd like to, when we get to adjournment, adjourn in honor of Dana's long service, since you were in the paper today as the ex-manager. So, since we're not there yet, but let's see how this vote goes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Literally, she is going home now.
I'm done.
No.
Come with me, we go down to the TSA.
Report by the...
It's like they should be down.
Get with Terry and there will be a, get with the planner and there will be a, the guy with the beard right here, Dan, and get with him for specifics. Yeah. Chair, if you could check in with Dan about specifics and just informing him so he can let, if you can inform, let Dan, give Dan a sort of an overview so he can let Wally King know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Report by the planning director?
The acting planning director this week is Bruce Smith and the director, Kim Rodriguez, will be back in the office on the 7th, next Tuesday, so currently out. No specific reports. Just as a, kind of a side note, just to generally let you know on the commercial and industrial side, the, as you can imagine, number of oil permits that we're getting processed has increased dramatically. So I'm not sure with the state of the economy, how many of them are going to proceed, but certainly that's probably the highest level of individual applications and things that we've had in over the last several months. So if that continues, we'll be quite busy. So, thank you.
Just a request, and that is because there have been some major changes in acquisition, once upon a time, we had an overview of oil permitting and environmental review and it's been a long time. So maybe put that on the list of a workshop that would be worth having, because I think we're past the, oil has been very, very good to Ventura County, which was a quote from a still-sitting supervisor. Anything else? Yes? Commissioner Malatar?
Can't get this chair to move here. I'm assuming that this information we received for the Mesa Union School District is simply for information and it's just because they have to notify us that they're intending to try to annex this land? We don't have to take any action or anything?
I'm not aware of what information you're referring to.
Okay. Danielle gave us a packet of acquisition of property for the Mesa Union School District, so forth, and it said they have to notify us by this public resources code that they want to do this property.
You've destroyed your chair.
Oh, it's the district two chair, I'm just... Oh, I should have turned it off.
Again, I just received this and I haven't had an opportunity to review it, so I don't know exactly what action, if any, is going to be required of your board or if this is purely noticed, but it's about a proposed taking of some property, so that's all I can tell from just a quick glance at this. I would leave it up to staff to determine if this needs further action or review by your commission.
But my understanding of the government code section, there's nothing we can do about it anyway since it was not agenda, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. Anything else? If the minutes could reflect the adjournment in honor of Dana Weisart, that would be lovely. And we'll see you all next week.
Bring your lunch.